Board meeting was only Board of Appeals meeting to order. Um, let's start with a roll call. So, um, it's actually, let's take my list. I have to do roll call every, every time this evening. So Jim.
Present.
Aziz.
Present.
Mary.
Present.
And Rocco.
Present.
All right. So that was also an audio check. So we're all good. So I do have an introduction that I'd like to just read to give everybody a sense of what we're doing tonight and how the meeting is going to get run. So just bear with me because it's on my other computer here. Good evening and welcome to the East Fishville Zoning Board of Appeals meeting of May 26th. Um, you guys may need to mute yourselves. Okay. Notice of tonight's meeting published as required and posted on the town's website. The web notice included instructions for members of the public to access the meeting and participate in any public hearings. For each of the public hearing applications on the agenda this evening, public comments will be taken at the appropriate time after the board has asked any questions. Please note that tonight's meeting is being recorded and a transcript will be available at a later date. We start our meeting tonight with some administrative issues, then we'll issue several decisions which are applications where the board has already seen them and the public hearings on the matters. Then we will hold a number of public hearings which will be on applications that the board has already reviewed and now wants to hear from the neighbors as we recognize that you know these areas better than we do. I will introduce each agenda item so everyone will know which item we are working on. We will not be closing any of these public hearings this evening. We will give everyone another 10 business days to submit written comments on every application. We will then resume all the public hearings at next month's meeting. Finally, we will get to the reviews, which are generally the first time we review applications or our applications where the applicants needed to get this board additional information. There will be no public comment on any of these reviews this evening. Neighbors will be noticed on these applications at the appropriate time for some future meeting. If you wish to comment on the application that has a public hearing, when we get to that item on the agenda and I ask for public comment, please do the following depending upon whether you are on the phone or online. Members of the public attending online via Zoom app may use the raise hand feature at the appropriate time if you wish to make a comment or ask a question. The feature is located at the bottom of the screen. Those attending via telephone can press star nine. The meeting host will see that your hand is raised and that you have pressed star nine and will unmute those waiting one at a time so that you can speak. In either case, please state your name when you are called upon to speak. So we do have a couple of ground rules. In order to keep this meeting orderly and ensure that we have a clear recording, please follow these ground rules. One, when you are given access to speak, please state your name and address. It is helpful for the board members to know if you are our neighbor to an application. Two, board members, I will call on you one at a time to speak to avoid everyone speaking at once. If you wish to speak at any time when I am not calling on you, you may also use the raise hand function or literally raise your hand so I can see you on the screen and I will call on you at that point. Three, board members, please mute yourselves when you are not speaking. This is especially important if you are not the only one home or if you have animals who might bark or otherwise interfere in the meeting. Four, we will use roll call voting for purposes of all board motions. That's going to take us some time this evening because again, everything, opening public hearings, everything will require a roll call vote. This will ensure that the record is clear. And on top of all that, we welcome to tonight's meeting our new zoning board clerk Jackie and our new secretary Paula as we thank our now retired clerk Pam and our secretary Lisa for all their years of service. We have the opportunity to work with some really great East Fishville staff through our board activities and I welcome Jackie and Paula. Thank you in advance to everyone for your patience and please bear with us as we negotiate this new way of doing things. Remember that we are used to having papers in front of us and now we're looking for documents on our computers in addition to those on paper. This will take also some getting used to for the board members themselves. You know, so for example, I'm, I'm on Zoom on one computer, but I've got my laptop next, right next to me just to be able to look at some of the documents that I have on here. So if I'm frequently looking to the side, that's why and same with other board members, they may have two computers going. So please, bottom line, just bear with us. We'll get through it. Thank you. All right. So with that being said, I'm going to go, we do, we are supposed to say a pledge of allegiance. Do we have a flag? If not, can I ask everybody to stand and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Cool. Somebody gave us a flag.
This is my first rodeo.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. So our next meetings are going to be Tuesday, June 23rd and July 28th. Tuesdays, we, at this point, the executive order that allows virtual meetings only takes us until June 8th or something. So we really at this point need to, you know, we'll, we'll decide closer to that point what those meetings will be. We do have one set of minutes to approve. I know there were a couple amendments to those minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th, 2020? In this case, raise your hand and let me know who wants to make the motion. Okay.
Moved as amended.
Okay. So I have a motion from Aziz with a second from Rocco. So votes as follows. Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So our minutes are carried. I got to get used to that. I wrote all your names out in front of me. So I don't have to worry about that. Okay. So again, moving right on, um, our item number one is Appeal 3935 Simmons. Luke Simmons, 10 Walls Road was granted a five foot frontline variance for a proposed 20 foot by 25 foot shed to be located in the front of his house. He has a road in front and behind his house. Therefore, he has two front yards. On January 28th, 2020, per section 194-107B2, a shed has a maximum height of 10 feet and the shed Mr. Simmons is proposing to build has a height of 15 feet. I guess because of the nature of the shed itself, it needs a higher roof. And because it's a shed, we did not think to ask him about the height. So, um, Mr., which would, okay, so the 15 foot height, which would be allowable if the structure was called an accessory structure rather than a shed. So Mr. Simmons would like to change the category of the structure he was granted a variance on. The location, footprint and use would remain as approved.
So I'm allowing Mr. Simmons ability to speak. Hello?
Hi.
Hey, how are you?
Good. So is there anything you wish to offer to what I just said?
Uh, no, that was basically what I need done. Um, I just needed a little.
We need to, I make a motion to.
It's not a public hearing. It's not a public hearing, Aziz.
Okay, then there is a decision. So.
Give us a minute.
Okay.
All right. So Mr. Simmons, otherwise you're okay?
Yes.
Okay. So, so in our, Aziz, for you and for the other board members in our prep meeting, because this is such a minor thing, he's not changing the location, he's not changing the use, he's not changing what it's going to look like. It's just, we just didn't ask the question whether there was going to be a second story. There isn't a second story, but it didn't come to the fact that the height is going to be taller than a normal shed is allowed to be. So because of that, there's no, there was no need to have a public hearing or anything like that for amendment. So, um, Michael did propose a draft, uh, motion. So there is actually a decision that Jackie emailed out to everybody this afternoon if somebody wants to offer that.
Uh, Jim, you want to offer?
I don't, okay, I have it. If you so offer me, I will so accept. So the reference to Appeal 3935 by the applicant Luke Simmons, at 10 Walls Road, Hopewell Junction, resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, whereas the applicant applied for a five foot frontline variance for a proposed 20 foot by 25 foot accessory structure to be located in front of his house. Whereas the zoning board of appeals granted the applicant's request for a variance as January 28th, 2020 meeting. This January decision in order. And whereas the January decision in order classified the structure as a shed rather than as an accessory structure. Whereas the applicant now requested that the structure be classified as an accessory structure. And whereas the applicant does not propose changing the location of the accessory structure or its footprint. Whereas the board moves to adopt the standard decision order and finds that the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community. The desired result not be achieved by some other means as the applicant's property has a road in front of the, the road along the rear of his property being Old Sylvan Lake. That's the part of the accessory structure. The accessory structure will be located 45 feet from the rear property line and will be separated from Old Sylvan Lake Road by the existing tree line. The variance requested is not substantial. The proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the above stated variance for an accessory structure as opposed to a shed. And the applicant may not proceed to the building department and apply for the building permit. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk. A copy sent to the applicant owner.
Second.
Sorry, had to take you off mute there. So thank you for the second. So votes as follows. Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Rocco.
Aye.
Okay, good. So the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. All right. Um, I should have stated at the beginning of the meeting that there is not going to be any action on items number two, three, or 14. Okay. So if you can all make those notes and adjustments accordingly. The one, both actually, the both two and three are both being postponed until next month. There's the one, Cattrall, is not for September. Both of them are postponed until June. So the fourth one is Appeal 3886, 3887, and 3888 Morgan Pina, Two Kane Drive. The board denied the applicant a two foot variance for an existing six foot fence located in front of the frontline of the house. Applicants filed in Article 78 and the court sent the appeal back to the ZBA to review within 90 days. Michael, I'm going to ask you to give us a little bit of background on this and then, um, we'll take it from there.
Sure. So as Norma mentioned, um, the board already heard this matter and they granted four out of the applicant's five variances. They're at, five requested variances there. The only one that the board didn't grant was a two foot fence height variance for a six foot fence in the front yard. Thereafter, the board was sued by the applicants via an Article 78 proceeding. And, um, the judge determined that the board should hear this matter again. So that's where we are right now. So right now before you, there's a proposed decision in order and it's, you know, for your discussion purposes. And with that, what it would do is it would, it would accomplish a few things. An option for the board is to grant the variance. But it, but while doing that, it could still require a landscaping plan to be approved by the town planner and also that the applicants would obtain all the necessary building permits and inspections.
Thank you. So again, we even while we were reviewing this, all we kept asking the applicant for was a landscape plan. And so I think the decision that Michael has proposed for us is consistent with what we were asking for throughout the process. But now at this point, actually approving that landscape plan would now be subject to the discretion of the town planner on, as opposed to coming back to this board. So, uh, question, any questions? Jim?
No questions.
Any questions, Aziz?
No questions.
Any questions, Mary?
Uh, just one. Um, you know, one of the things that, I was just wondering about is I, I remember this case and they put up a berm and then they put the fence on top of the berm, creating a very tall fence. And I'm wondering what impact that's going to have on future homeowners who wish to have a 10 foot fence or whatever and building up the ground and then putting a, you know, a fence of proper height on top of it. Does this set a precedent that, that, um, for this?
So, um, partially what was going on there, they were allowed to build the berm?
Well, retaining wall, actually.
Finally, a retaining wall. Um, so they're allowed to build it.
Okay.
And then the six feet, and it's, you know, partially based on the topography of their lot. And then the six foot, obviously they couldn't have the six foot fence, you know, without relief from this board, which is why they were before us. So. I think each situation will be treated differently in this regard.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. And just on that topic, I would agree. I mean, this was the one with the swimming pool.
Right.
They put it around so they were allowed, uh, all those things. So it wasn't just a berm. It was part of a thing that they're making a deck or patio around the pool. So I see this as a unique situation. So I understand Mary's concern, but I, I think as Mike indicated, this is a unique situation that we can not be held in terms of a precedence on every application that may come in.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mary, any other questions?
No, that was it, Norma. Thank you.
Okay, Rocco, any, any questions?
No questions.
Okay. So would somebody like to offer the decision?
Mary, Mary, you want to go?
Sure. This is Appeal number 3887 for Joanne Morgan and Fred Henya. Name of the project is denial, a review of denial of the two foot variance for an existing six foot fence, which is located in front of the frontline of the house at Two Kane Drive. Resolution offered by a zoning board of appeals member Mary Seminera. Whereas the applicants previously applied for five variances, collectively the requested variances. One, Appeal 3886, a variance to allow a camper to be parked in their front yard pursuant to section 194-52.1 of the zoning ordinance. And two, Appeal 3887, a two foot variance for an existing six foot fence which is located in front of the frontline of the house. A three foot frontline variance for the existing house and a three foot frontline variance for an existing above ground pool, which is one foot in front of the frontline of the house pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations and sections 194-98 and 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. And Appeal 3888, a variance to allow a shed under 144 square feet in size to remain located in front of the house pursuant to section 194-107B3 of the zoning ordinance. Whereas pursuant to a decision in order from its May 28th, 2019 meeting, the ZBA voted to grant four out of the applicant's five requested variances. And whereas specifically the ZBA denied the following. One, the ZBA granted the applicant's request for a variance to allow a camper to be parked in their front yard. Two, the ZBA granted the applicant's request for a three foot frontline variance for the existing house. Three, the ZBA granted the applicant's request for a three foot frontline variance for an existing above ground pool, which is one foot in front of the frontline of the house. Four, the ZBA granted the applicant's request for a variance to allow a shed under 144 square feet in size to remain located in front of the house upon the condition that said shed is repainted the same color as the side of the house facing it within 90 days. And five, the ZBA denied the applicant's request for a two foot variance for an existing six foot fence which is located in front of the frontline of the house. Whereas the applicants initiated an Article 78 proceeding against the, the ZBA to, one, set aside the determination of the ZBA which denied the applicant's request for, for an area variance for a six foot fence. Two, direct the ZBA to issue the area variance. And three, award the applicant's attorney fees, restitution costs and disbursements. And whereas the court's decision dated January 30th, 2020, set aside the denial of the two foot variance for fence height and remitted the case back to the ZBA for further review within 90 days, but denied the remainder of the applicant's petition. And whereas due to the coronavirus, COVID-19 pandemic, this matter was reheard at the May 26th, 2020 meeting. And whereas this is a type two action under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACER, pursuant to six NYCRR 617.5 paragraph C17, with no further reason, further pursuant, no further review pursuant to SEACER required at this time. And whereas the zoning board of appeals previously held a public meeting, I'm sorry, public hearing on March 26th, 2019, and an additional public hearing is not required for this review. Now therefore, as a result of the foregoing, the decision in order of the zoning board of appeals is as follows. The ZBA grants the applicant's request for a two foot variance for an existing six foot fence which is located in front of the frontline of the house, subject to the following conditions. One, the applicants obtain all necessary permits and inspections from the building department for work done to the applicant's property. The building department is tasked with ensuring safety of construction. Construction completed by the pool and fence area has not been properly reviewed by the building department due to the applicant's failure to properly file for permits. Two, pursuant to a landscaping plan to be provided by the applicants, subject to the approval of the town planner, landscaping is to be placed in front of the fence facing Lee Town Road. Landscaping will serve to limit the obtrusiveness and monotony of the fence in the front yard. Now therefore, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall call, so cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant slash owner.
Second.
Norma, you're on mute.
I knew that was going to keep happening. All right. So vote, thank you for the second. Votes as follows. Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye. So the motion carries. Okay. So now we're up to the public hearing. So Aziz, now you got to keep me honest here. So.
Aziz, can you make me the host again? There went a little technical glitch where you became the host and just click on my name and then the three little dots and you'll be able to make me the host again.
Okay.
He's always trying to take power.
I was about to say that he beat me to it.
Wow. I'm always amazed how I look like I'm sitting in the dark and I'm like in a perfectly bright room, but. All right. Are we ready? All right. So that we are now to the public hearings.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. I'm just transferring. It's just.
I'm the host now. We're all good.
Yeah, you did it.
Okay. So this is our first public hearing, item number five, Appeal 3938 Gabrielli. Donald Gabriella of Carmel is requesting a variance to build on two undersized vacant lots, which would be combined for a total of 1.69 acres in an R3 zone on a non-town road, Arthur Road, pursuant to sections 194-30 of the zoning ordinance and a 280A variance. So do I have a motion to reconvene the public hearing?
So I'm moved. Second.
Okay. Votes as follows. Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Rocco.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, we need the applicant to raise their hand, right, Michael?
Michael Gillespie already did. So he's.
Okay, good. No problem. Okay. So this is not the first time, obviously, the board has seen this application. We've actually seen it a couple of times at this point. We are talking about, um, a applicant who has taken two undersized lot, put them, to combine them together, but still has a, an undersized lot, 1.69 acres where three acres are required. It is a non-town road. There is really one, a one single lane pass to be able to get back for past the two or three houses that already exist on Arthur Road. But we have seen pictures that we know the utility trucks can get in there. We did send this to the fire advisory board and, you know, they were like, they, you know, pretty much were okay with it. There was some discussion at our last meeting about making sure there is, uh, if, if anything does happen here, that an appropriate turnaround would be added past this applicant's driveway so that if anybody happens to wander on here and was not intending to, they would have the ability to turn around as well as any other utility trucks or garbage trucks or anything like that. One thing we have had some, haven't had really a whole lot of conversation about is that we've heard from a couple neighbors that are downhill from this property that when the last house got built, they have run into now encountered more of late, some drainage issues. So Michael, I need you to, in you, in what you're going to discuss with us this evening, you know, if there's anything else you need to add to the application that we've already talked about. You can address how you're going to address storm water. I think that's going to be really important, particularly for the neighbors who now might want to come into the application.
Okay. Everybody can hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So yeah, the first part of that quick, we certainly do, uh, agree and understand that we're going to provide a turnaround area. You know, again, beyond the driveway of what's being proposed in order to allow for that turnaround area. The last time we were before, um, you know, the board, the neighborhood, that, that neighbor, the neighborhood, a neighbor had written a letter into the, into the, uh, into the public hearing record. I actually had an opportunity to go out and kind of take a look at, um, the setup out there in terms of walking the site as well as, you know, taking a look at the subject's property downhill. And the long and short of it is, is, um, Arthur Road gains access through, from, from Wendy, Wendy Hill Road. And there's a hill there and it goes up and he, basically 52 is kind of the bottom of the hill. So it doesn't surprise me that maybe prior to development, I'm not sure how long ago the previous house went up. I consider it's a few years ago. You know, the rules are a little bit different now. As part of this application, we have to obtain approval from not only the, the health department, but it's in addition to New York City DEP. We're in a watershed down there. And with that, the rules are a little different. If you disturb over 5,000 square foot in area, which we clearly are proposing to do, then we actually have to prepare a stormwater pollution prevention plan. Okay? And with that, we can't show that we're going to have any negative, you know, impact on, you know, coming off the property. So as part of the design on this whole parcel, as part of the approval process as this goes forward, uh, that's going to be a big part of it. So I, I think we can handle that aspect of it because again, being that we're in the watershed, knowing that we have to perform a SWIP, we have to subscribe to those requirements anyway.
Is, is your sense, Michael, that in addressing the stormwater, maybe you can improve whatever is draining down to that neighbor?
Well, as you come into this property right up, you know, I've actually crossed it. There's a small little drainage ditch, which I'm sure when it rains, it certainly fills up and makes its way right down toward, uh, where the, where the subject neighbor's property is. So I can certainly state, and again, part of this too is, is, um, when we move, as moving forward, if we can get, you know, again, through, through this part of the process, there's, there's a, the ability to try and effectuate this in terms of, you know, whether we submit a plot plan and certain approvals or the town engineer has to review the turnaround area. You know, we will do certainly what we can. I mean, I don't think we're in a position where we have to solve other issues, but we can certainly have some dialogue with the neighbor and we can try and implement things into this site in order to try and improve that a little bit. But, um, that, that, that study still has to be obviously performed and so forth. But, um, I don't, I don't see any problem with trying to do that if we, if we can.
Is the neighbor that we're talking about, is he on Joseph Road or is he on 52?
I believe that he has access right off of 52.
Okay. All right. So that's going, so it is your side in essence of Arthur Road there.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Um, any questions from Jim?
Yeah, I'm just, as you're talking about that, uh, my impression would be that they wouldn't really be able to do anything for the drainage along the road. All you really can do, I guess, Mr. Gillespie, is not prevent, all you can do is prevent any more runoff going into that drainage ditch, correct?
Yeah, I, I think the concern, I don't have the letter with me to read verbatim, but I think it more was an issue of the water coming from, through his property, from the back of his property, but his house is facing 52. So, you know, it's coming from our direction. So, but I, I think that was the concern. I'm not necessarily, I don't recall it being like some kind of an issue along 52 where the water wasn't making its way across the road or something like that. It's actually the potential drainage impact coming to him from behind him up on the hill.
Right. My, my sense is that it drains off of this lot on Arthur down into that neighbor's property or it could be the, from the neighboring property on Arthur onto this neighbor's property because they're downhill from here.
Right. And we have properties that are uphill from us, which we're going to have to try and work our, you know, residents around to try and make it work and get the grading to work and all that kind as well to, to protect us. So I certainly understand that.
Okay. Any other questions from?
Well, so then really you're talking, it's along the back of the property. So some sort of swell or to retain it, slow it down? Is that what you're?
Yeah, we, we, yeah, I mean, we could actually, you know, the, the existing drainage course that's there is basically an earthen ditch. Certainly some of the things we could do is, is line that with some, you know, some stone and some riprap. I mean, if we have the room, we can certainly install, um, you know, what they call rain gardens and some other things. But not only, you know, the, the DPs are going to require treatment requirements anyway, but that'll also hold back some of the water from kissing across the ground and actually get it, or get across the, across the ground and get it into the ground.
And you're indicating that will all be part of this process of getting approval for building on the lot?
EP requires it. Yep.
Okay. Nothing further.
Questions from Aziz?
Uh, Mike, I was wondering, currently there are three, um, houses on Arthur Road. Is that right? Or is there more than three houses currently on the, on the site?
There's, um, it, it would appear that there's three. There's actually two houses that, that get served access directly off of Arthur. The, uh, the home in the front actually have access directly off of Wendy Hill. So that's your answer.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And questions from Mary?
Um, actually, I, I think.
Um, actually, I, I think that my questions have been answered, uh, I've been asked and answered, so I might just, I just question about the letter that we got from the neighbor, does that get read into the record at this point? Did we have a meeting? We haven't had a meeting since then, this letter came in.
I had put it, I thought it come in prior to the last meeting, because we had a copy of it and it was something we had to go look at, I, I think, I thought it'd come in prior to the last meeting.
It's dated March 23rd.
So it would have been the, um.
Yeah, we didn't have a March.
We didn't have a March meeting.
Okay, so maybe somebody emailed it to me or something along those lines, but we, we, we do have a copy of it.
That's, I'll read it into the record, I have it in front of me now, um, wow. Okay, uh, so let me just get through questions from board members first, so Mary, any other questions?
No, none for me, Mark, Norm.
Okay, Rocco, any questions?
No, mine were answered, actually.
Okay, Michael, the only other thing I want to ask to get it on the record is if we allow somebody to build on this undersized lot, is he going to need variances to do anything else in his yard? What's the buildable area that he has? Does he have a backyard for him to be able to put a shed or put a pool or anything like that?
Yeah, I mean, it's a three acre zone, I believe, yeah, it's a three acre zone, we're going, you know, we're getting close to two, so it's, it's, you know, typically, you know, again, East Fishville traditionally is a one acre development town, so there, there is room, um, on the lot to allow for further improvements, so they're not coming back to you for, for further variances, at least the way we played it out.
Okay, just want to be sure, get that on the record, okay, so we do have a neighbor letter, um, hold on, again, I'm on my other computer here, so dated March 23rd, "My name is Don, Dominic Montagna of 4122 Route 52, Holmes, New York, I received a letter regarding the above referenced zoning appeal which is within 250 feet of my property, I am writing to let you know that I do have a concern that I would like to share with the zoning board and the town engineer, please see the attached contour map, I highlighted my property and Mr. Gabriella's lots in red to illustrate that my property sits considerably lower than Mr. Gabrielli's and at the bottom of the mountain. Also, please notice the drainage swell I highlighted in yellow, this swell collects a good portion of water from the mountain and directs it through a drainage sheath and on my property and eventually onto Route 52. I have lived in my current property for over 30 years and I can say with certainty that during large rain events this swell runs a capacity. In the rare event I have ever seen this well run over capacity, oh, in the rare event I have even seen it run over capacity. Every few years I am burdened with the expense of cleaning all the silt and sand deposits that travel down the mountain and pollute my swell, this is necessary to keep the water within the banks of the swell, otherwise the stormwater will spill onto my yard and threaten my house. The point I am trying to make is, as I know you are aware of this, as development begins to increase on this mountain, specifically Joseph and Arthur's roads, so does stormwater runoff, if the town allows stormwater runoff to increase anymore, it will overburden this drainage swell and will negatively impact my property, the adjacent properties and even Route 52. Evidence of erosion is already clear at the Route 52 inlet and will only get worse if something is not done to control increased stormwater runoff from the mountain. When property 603266 was developed approximately 10 to 15 years ago, my neighbor developed a noticeably wetter property, his back and side yard are wet almost year round. When property 587239 was developed approximately 10 years ago, I observed an increase in flow into my drainage swell and have been forced to increase the frequency of cleaning the silt and sand pollutants since. Now, as more development is on the horizon, it is time for something to be done, the development of the reference lots will negatively impact my drainage swell a significant amount if a stormwater management plan is not created. I know stormwater management is important to Dutchess County, the Town of East Fishville, the EPA and the DEC, I would be interested to know what the stormwater management and the erosion sediment control plan is for the property in question, I would be against the proposed appeal if they do not plan on keeping stormwater runoff into that swell or at, at or below existing conditions post-construction. It would be neglectful to simply allow this stormwater to sheet flow down for a steep, such a steep mountain to the existing downstream properties and drainage systems that were not initially designed for the increased runoff burden. Possible solutions could be to create stormwater retention or detention basins for all of Arthur and Joseph Roads to drain into, or turn that swell into a closed drainage system to eliminate the erosion and sediment pollution that will increase with development. Wendy Hill Road also currently has a closed system that could be tapped into, I would bet it is underdesigned for this increased flow as well. I know solutions cost money, but development in East Fishville has been booming for many years and that, that is a testament to the great reputation our town has. All of that increased tax revenue does come with an increased maintenance cost, a cost that typically pays off in the end, and that's a win-win for our town. Thank you so much for your time, I would appreciate any, any feedback, so please do not hesitate to contact me, signed Dominic Montagna, who thankfully is telling, is a P, so we know we can believe what he's telling us here. So, Michael, with, with that on the record, any comments to what he has said?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything in there that, 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 you know, doesn't make sense, and, and again, I think, you know, that whole, uh, stormwater management plan, that, that stormwater pollution prevention plan, which we're going to be preparing, hopefully addresses that, as part of this too, I mean, um, this gets reviewed by, um, by DEP, presumptively the town engineers, um, office will probably get a crack at it, and then, um, we have to file a stormwater, we have to file a, what they call a notice of intent on this lot with the E C, so there's a lot of preventative things along the line there, but in terms of him reviewing it, um, or looking at it, or, or, you know, I don't know how to, we can make that happen, or I can get ahold of him, um, uh, just to, you know, if, if he's interested in that, but, but again, I think all the things that he's saying are things we're planning on implementing anyway.
Okay, his letter does have, his, his letter does have a phone number and an email address, so both of them are actually on his letter, you should have that information, but Michael has told us that he's actually, you know, here and, so.
He's risen his hand, so he, so he'll be prepared to speak during the public hearing portion.
That's fine. Okay, so, Michael, anything else you need to add, not, not Michael Cunningham, Michael Gillespie, anything else you need to add to the record at this point?
No, I think I'm good, thank you.
Okay, so, I'm now going to remind that anybody who is interested in speaking related to this public hearing, that you ask, that if you're online, that you raise your hand, use that feature at the bottom of your screen, if you're on the phone, if you can hit star nine, then that will let Michael Cunningham, our attorney, know that somebody else wishes to speak. So, Michael Cunningham, if you can let me know, the first speaker?
Sure, so it's, uh, Mr. Montagna is the first speaker, and I'm allowing him to speak now. So, Mr. Montana, you're able to speak.
Welcome.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, hi, great, you can hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, um, no, I just want to say thank you for addressing my letter, and it sounds like, um, it sounds like there's going to be a stormwater management plan developed, and I was wondering if we're going to be able to, um, look at it before everything is approved, is it, is it going to be available for, um, for view?
So, Mr. Montana, the, the, the applicant, lot owner's professional, Michael Gillespie, who's also an engineer, um, has offered to get in touch with you, so we're, we're just telling him he has your contact information on your letter that you left, so, um, I'm sure he, Michael Gillespie will reach out to you directly.
Yeah, we can, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, great, you have my con, contact info, um, that's really the only concern I had, um, and again, thank you for addressing the letter.
Okay, good, thank you very much for joining us this evening. Michael Cunningham has. Go ahead.
We have one more person who, um, who's here to speak, Kay, uh, Kay Desiana, so I'm allowed her to speak, I don't know, either him or her to speak, I don't know what exactly the first name is.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, uh, my name is Steve Desiana, I live at, uh, 4118 Route 52, Holmes, New York.
Thank you.
Right next door to, uh, Dominic Montagna that you were just speaking to. Since we've lived here in 2001, uh, the side of my house on Wendy Hill is pretty much awash. There's no way, uh, when I cut my lawn, my mower sinks into my lawn because of all the water that's running off in the back hill now. I can only imagine how much more problems I'm going to have if they put another house in. I said, and then they're going to take the trees, the, the people that developed behind us already, when I put my shed up, my shed was 43 or 44 feet from the back of my existing house. Right now, I bet you it's moved 10 feet down from all the erosion that I've gotten down the hills.
He cut so many trees down.
So, I don't, you know, if, if they can't resolve what, the problems that I have now, I can't see them resolving and adding more to the problem than it is already.
Okay, thank you very much, is there anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, so, so, Michael, you've heard another neighbor, can you, you know, it looks like this is a slightly different angle than Mr. Montagna, so, um, are you, again, going to be looking into making sure the drainage going in that direction is also being addressed?
Yeah, I think, I think both of the properties are probably in the general vicinity of this parcel, um, again, I, I guess, so, you know, as, as taking care of our overall drainage on our particular lot, hopefully there'll be, you know, improvement maybe to each one of them on the bottom, but, um, you know, also too, the rules as they propagate themselves today are a bit different than they, than they've been over the last, um, you know, 20 years, they're, they're, they're much more stringent, um, and so forth, so there's going to be multiple reuse on this, and again, I'm happy to share any information with the property owners, this property, you know, as this moves along, in order to give them, you know, a level of comfort, especially, you know, again, Mr. Montana, the engineer, I'm presuming, um, he, he would know what he's looking at, um, uh, to understand the numbers and, and to give, uh, you know, a sense of, uh, you know, that, that, that this has been looked at and we've been dealing with it the best way that we can.
Okay, so, thank you, Michael Cunningham, is there anybody else raising their hand?
I see Mr. Desiana still has his hand raised, but I think, I'm assuming he got all his comments out before, I think he just lifted it up, you know, by accident, unless you want me to try to promote him to speak again.
Might as well try to make sure.
Yeah, let's be sure.
Sure. Mr. Desiana, have you, have you made all your comments, or you wanted to make another?
No, um, all my comments were made, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. So, again, guys, we're not going to close any of these public hearings this evening, so I, I need a motion to adjourn and reminder to all the neighbors that you can address your comments in writing to this board before our next meeting, preferably within the next 10 day, 10 business days, okay? Um, and then this way we'll, we'll be able to read them into the record at the next meeting, but we will reconvene the public hearing at our next meeting. So do I have a motion to?
So, so.
Just one second, I, I, well, it's on my mind, I'd like to make one more comment. I had a follow-up question, and Mr. Gillespie touched on it, when he said presumably the town engineers would be looking at that, I would just, maybe like some clarification whether that would in fact be submitted to the town engineers, or maybe we consider that to be one of the requirements if it's approved, just so that's on our minds.
Yeah, I, I, I guess that was going to be a question if it came down to a resolution, that, that anything that we provided is, as part of the process now in East Fishville, there's a, is what they call an integrated plot plan, it's prepared, it's very detailed, um, in terms of the specific homes to be installed, details on the septic, grading, spot elevations, vegetation, erosion control, drainage improvements and so forth, so, um, as part of, of this, in order to effectuate, you know, to make sure that, that it happens and everybody's pleased with it, um, I would presume that the town engineer would be taking a look at this and, uh, the stormwater pollution prevention plan as well, so, you know, I think that typically happens as part of, of the process, but to, to put it in there certainly doesn't hurt, you know?
Thank you.
Okay, so now do I have a motion to adjourn?
Um, and then, and then close it at the next, my next meeting, so moved.
We have to, we're not going to close it at the next meeting, we're just going to adjourn it to the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, so Aziz has adjourned, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, um, Jim has seconded, so, votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, so we are adjourned until next month, again, anybody who wishes to offer comments is welcome to, to do that. Okay.
All right, thanks, guys.
All right, our next item on the agenda is item number six, Appeal 3945 Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Wireless Edge Towers 2 LLC and Orange County Poughkeepsie Limited Partnership, doing businesses for Verizon, Wireless Edge is requesting a special permit to install a 110 monopole and associated ground mounted equipment located within a 45 foot by 65 foot fenced gravel surfaced compound to be located on a 69 acre parcel at the intersection of Carpenter Road and the southwest corner of the iconic State Parkway pursuant to Section 194-76 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, sorry. Jim?
I waited for you, aye.
I know, I'm sorry. So, Jim is an aye, Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
I'm just going to ask you to all put up your hands soon, I think, you know? All right, um, so we are, public hearing is open, um, so we did have an opportunity to review this, is the applicant now on, available, Michael Cunningham?
So I promoted Bob Guardioso, and is somebody named John Arthur from your development?
Yes, John is with us, John is the president of Wireless Edge, and he's also a professional engineer.
Okay, so, let, let me just remind everybody where we're.
No problem.
Let me just remind everybody where we are at, because, um, at this point, we have seen this application before, um, we had a discussion about the fact that, um, it's a very large parcel, there is no development plan for the rest of the parcel at this point, because we were concerned about segmentation and the owner of the parcel telling us what else he was looking to do on the parcel. We are concerned about the fact that there are wetlands on the site, uh, we are concerned about the fact that some wetlands have been filled in, likely to get a drought, a driveway into the part of this property that, where the, where the tower and the associated equipment is all going to be installed. We did have a conversation last time around about the, um, town and county needing the top 10 feet or there, thereabouts of the tower for public safety purposes, um, not necessarily, we need it reserved, we don't necessarily know at this point what the use will be, but we do need that to be in place. Um, so, we just, at this point, we need to get a little bit more direction from the applicant, oh, and we did, the important thing is, we did have, um, a radio frequency expert that has now taken a look at the application, um, I'm going to ask our town planner to basically review the report that came in from the radio frequency expert, and then at that point ask the applicant if they've got any additional information to provide to us based on the requests from this expert, because the applicant has had this letter since, uh, February. So, Michelle, if you don't mind, we'll let you take it first.
Sure. So I'm just going to, just quickly review the letter, um, the, just to summarize, there's some outstanding material that the, um, expert asked for, um, and basically, the main issues are to confirm the proof of the need for a new facility and the minimum structure height required, there's some, um, concern that, or potential that 110 foot structure height may not be necessary, um, so he has asked the applicant to provide additional information that would show, in specifically propagation maps, that would show, uh, what the level of service would be at lower height intervals of 190 and 80 feet. Next is that they also asked for, um, capacity and data and coverage maps, so they're requiring, they're requiring propagation maps be submitted for all the different frequencies, 700 megahertz, 850 megahertz, 1900 and 2100, um, and there were some attached propagation data, uh, study sheets that were included with the letter, and they were asking the applicant to provide the information on those sheets. Um, in addition, there was mention of the potential for the wetland incursion and the need for, potentially for, um, DEC to be involved, since it's a, it's a DEC regulated wetland, and access to the site location may be an issue regarding state and local wetlands. And then, um, I think those are the main, those are the main points that he made, um, in his letter, I mean, data that he was requesting. In addition to the letter that we received from the engineer, we also received a letter in February from, um, DEC noting that there was a, a close by wetland, um, and also noting, um, the. noting that there was a close by wetland and also noting the potential for cultural resource floodplain, runoff, stormwater runoff and state listed species in Indiana bat. So those are, those are the things that they just sort of need to address the DEC letter, which was a general letter, but noted that there was a potential for, because of the Taconic State Parkway visual, potential for visual impacts to the Taconic, also for Indiana bat floodplain and wetland. And then, and as you spoke, Norma, there was also a a letter that we received from the county requesting that space be made available at the top of the structure. So those are the three things that I think came in. I'm not exactly sure if they came in before or after the last meeting, but all those things were provided to the applicant.
Okay, just for the record, because this is a public hearing, can you tell us the consultant, his name and how he was selected?
Sure. His name is Richard A. Comey. And actually, the company that he is from is called the Center for Municipal Solutions out of Glenmont, New York. And he was selected, we we contacted a number of potential consultants to see if they could do this particular or review this particular application and he was selected.
Good, thank you very much. So before I hand it off to the applicant, are there any, unless the board wants me to get direction from the applicant at this point, but Jim, do you have any questions that you'd like the applicant to address as well?
Well, I mean, the main thing, I mean, most of it's covered by the engineer. I would like to know more about the incursion on the wetlands when that occurred and and make sure that the DEC is aware of that. They don't mention Blanding's Turtle, but I know that in some of these wetlands around that area, we have endangered species of Blanding's Turtle. That creates concern as to whether that's going to be incursion there. They mentioned Indiana bat, that usually is their home location is usually far enough away that that's not infringed upon. But I do have some concerns. I originally thought was about the wetlands and they would be sufficient distance away. But if it's been encroached upon in order to get back to where the tower would be, I think that needs to be addressed and make sure that the proper reviews are done.
Okay, good, thank you. Aziz, any additional questions you would like the applicant to address?
Not at this time.
Okay, Mary, any additional questions you'd like the applicant to address?
No, Norma, not at this time.
Okay, and Rocco, any additional questions you'd like addressed?
Not at this time.
Okay, so I'm going to hand it over to John and Mr. Guardioso. Just let us go ahead, fill us in with what's happened since we last met and just where you guys are with providing the additional information that's been requested of you.
Sure. Well, thank you very much. Good evening. Robert Guardioso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder. As I mentioned before, I'm joined by John Arthur, president of Wireless Edge. He's also a professional engineer. As you may recall, the proposed facility is 110 feet in height, which does meet the height limit of the code. We also meet all of the relevant setbacks to the property lines, closest residential unit. Also, from the Taconic State Parkway, we meet those setbacks. Essentially, we meet all of the code bulk requirements, but we do require a special permit. Regarding the three letters that came in, I'll start with the county letter. I believe we discussed that last time. Mr. Arthur had noted that the top of the tower would be reserved for the town's emergency service facilities. In fact, we had previously submitted a letter from Mr. Arthur regarding the structural capacity of the tower and it specifically demonstrated the top of the tower would be reserved for the town's emergency services. So that has been documented. As far as the DEC letter, what the DEC letter did say was that they consented to the planning board acting as lead agency. They also highlighted the fact that the that the Indiana bat could be impacted and suggested a tree clearing restriction, which we had already highlighted in the EAF and on the plans. So no trees will be removed from, I believe it's October 1st to March 31st with regard to that comment. There was no comment regarding Blanding's Turtles. That was not an issue for the DEC and it did not come up in our EAF review as well. Regarding the wetlands, we had discussed this, I believe, last time. We are aware that the existing access drive does go through in a small area of the wetlands. We are proposing to do some minor grading on the access drive and we're proposing to put the underground utilities in the access drive. We have already flagged the wetlands. They're shown on the site plan that you have. We already had contacted the DEC. They were supposed to come out and confirm our delineation of our wetland flags. Unfortunately, because of the current situation, they had to cancel that meeting. So we're just waiting for them to come out. But we do recognize and we acknowledged in the EAF and in the documents and at the last meeting that we will ultimately need a DEC permit. So we're aware of that that potential wetland issue. As far as the radio frequency comments, we had actually discussed this at the last meeting. And in fact, on March 6th, we submitted a full response from Verizon Wireless's RF engineer. A couple highlights, number one, we previously did submit the coverage maps at the relevant frequency levels. So that's already in the application package. We already did submit the capacity data to show the capacity overages at the surrounding sites, including Hosner Mountain, Fischko Plains and our surrounding site in Beekman at Sylvan Lake. So that is already part of the application. It was further explained in the March 6th filing that we made. The engineer also explained why the lower height coverage maps were not relevant in this particular application and why the coverage maps that was submitted not only meet the code, but also explain the need for the facility. So we think we fully have addressed the comments, both pursuant to the code requirements, but also with respect to the town's consultant. Finally, regarding a potential impact on the Taconic State Parkway. If you recall, we originally submitted a visual analysis that included the view shed map showing there would be no visual impact on the Taconic. I'm pleased to report that we did receive confirmation from New York State Chipo that there would be no adverse effect on historic properties. We can certainly submit that for the record as well before the next public hearing. So I think we did cover with the initial filing and then the supplemental filing in March. When we filed in March, we also included confirmation there would be no FAA lighting on the tower. We submitted a report from the FAA confirming that and we confirmed there would be no impacts from noise associated with the facility and that we'd be in compliance with the town noise code. So with that, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board or the public may have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, I don't have any additional submittal from March. So has that been shared with the board and has that been sent to the radio frequency expert?
I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that.
Hmm.
January, I don't see March.
Yeah, exactly. I have January and then I have the February letter from DEC. I don't have anything for March.
Yeah, if you recall, we had promised last time to get it in by, I believe it was the Tuesday or the Wednesday. And we actually got it in the the prior week early. I actually have a stamped copy of the cover letter from the town where it was received. We can certainly email it over to anyone that would like either tomorrow or we could probably even share.
We'll file and see if it came in. That's fine. That's no, no issue. And I can get back to you tomorrow to confirm that we received it.
Thank you.
Okay, I I mean, the bottom line is we we're not going to be able to close the public hearing today anyway. So we have, do have time to review that, but the board members should each get that additional information. So so the bottom line is there's, as our expert is telling us, there's already appropriate coverage. What you had told us last time around was that this wasn't about necessarily about coverage, but that this was about providing additional capacity. Is that still what, was I understanding that correctly?
No, I don't think so. And and I don't think your consultant said that there was sufficient coverage either. What the Verizon RF engineer demonstrated is that there's both a coverage issue and there's also a capacity issue. And he went into great detail with the coverage map showing the gaps in coverage, particularly along the Taconic and in the 52 corridor area, but also a capacity issue on the surrounding sites that they're already overcapacity. The issue is that the surrounding sites are very high, meaning that they're on tall mountains, they're high in elevation and they cover almost too much area, but they don't cover into this particular area. So because they're covering so much area, they also then cover a lot of users and that's causing a capacity issue. So as Verizon's radio frequency engineer, Mr. Crosby, demonstrated, he showed the coverage map showing the gaps at both the high frequency and the low frequency. And he also showed the capacity data for the surrounding sites, showing how they're overcapacity. And that was all previously submitted.
Sorry, I have to unmute myself again. So in, but in addition, the la, the town engineer, I know, took a look at the applicant, took a look at the file just like I want to say two weeks ago and told me that the only plan that was in the file was dated December 30th. So I don't think we've received another plan because what we looked at, at that original plan was, and I think Mr. Arthur said this at the last meeting, was that it's really only four feet at the top. They may, that may be potentially available for public service and he was going to confirm that. That you're, that right in the original plan from December 30th was showing the Verizon was going to be at 106 feet. So.
No, so I think I think maybe there might have been a miscommunication on that. So you're correct, the only plan that's been submitted is the original plan. What, and the Verizon, the center line of the Verizon antennas, which are eight feet in length, the center line is at 106 feet. So the top of the Verizon antennas are the same as the 110 foot tower. And that's, and that's what the code permits. And in Verizon's material, they said, quite frankly, they would rather be higher, but they made, they made a decision to make sure they complied with the code and keep it at 110 feet. What Mr. Arthur explained last time was that at the top of the tower, he would design the tower when he submits the construction drawings to have a flange so the town can attach its antennas to the top of the tower. And if you look at the structural report that was submitted with the original application, he specifically calls out the fact that there would be space for four of the town whip antennas on top of the tower, starting at the 110 foot mark. So the town would have the top is, you know, as high up as the town wanted. The town would have all of that space reserved for it.
Okay, that was definitely not discussed at the last meeting because we are not looking for a tower that's going to exceed 110 feet. Okay?
Well, the tower wouldn't exceed 110 feet, but if the town wanted to put antennas, the town could put whatever antennas it likes. Usually municipal services uses very thin whip antennas, usually a couple inches in diameter. And then they, and then they put them above the carrier panel antennas. And if John would like to add to that, I'm fairly certain that that was the discussion at the February meeting.
No, that that's correct. So when when we put a carrier at their center line, that for Verizon, in this case, 106 feet, a lot of towers will just end at that point and the carriers and tenants will stick above that. So we designed an extra section of tower which goes between 106 and 110. And that's where we would install a municipal mount. And typically, a municipal mount has a couple of small arms and it has a pipe and the antennas for the town mount onto the pipe. So they stick up above the tower and they they can take up a lot of room. So it's not really appropriate to put them below. And in this case, they would be in the trees anyway, so they wouldn't really have a lot of advantages there. So it's definitely room and it's a cable port designed in there for municipal antennas as well.
Okay, the the plans that were submitted also don't show this tower to be designed to look like a tree. Is that your intention? If not, we're going to tell you that's what you're going to design it to look like.
Well, the the intention was to minimize, quite frankly, the profile of the tower. And that's why if you look at the Verizon antennas, there are six of them, they're close to the tower itself. The fake tree, quite frankly, is a fake tree. And that's certainly something that would have a much greater diameter and quite frankly, much greater visibility.
Okay, but we're telling you that it's going to look like a tree. All right, we already have one in town and it looks perfectly fine. So we are aware of what it looks like. It's been, the last one that's been up there is on the Dogwood Golf Course has been there for a number of years now. So, you know, it really blends in well enough to make it, it doesn't stand out looking like a tower. Okay? So I'm not sure we've resolved this municipal access at the top of the tower issue here beyond, you're telling us that really we'd have to make the tower even taller. So I do think we need to have the radio frequency expert look at the additional information that you, that's been provided and see where we go from here. So is there anything else you'd like to offer at this point?
No, I I think our application does comply with the code, the way it's been submitted. We're not saying that the height of the tower would have to be increased for municipal services. I think what we're saying is this tower will be designed to be able to support those municipal services if the town so chooses.
But I guess the question is, is you're saying yours mount at the center line. So if the town puts antennas at the top four feet, that's only where they attach. They can't have any antennas below the top of the tower as well, can they?
No, that's correct. I mean, that that's the point is that the town will benefit from being at the top of the tower and and get, quite frankly, the better space.
The other question, again, with my initial comment is, you alluded to it, I'm not sure you answered. Was the DEC aware that there was encroachment on the wetlands in order to get back to the site? Or did they just look at the site and look at how far away you are to determine or to make their determination?
No, the, no, the DEC specifically, number one, has to come out and look at the site. And they have to come out and look at where we flagged the wetlands and either agree or disagree. Then we have to make a wetlands application, which the DEC will will rule upon as far as its jurisdiction over the wetlands. As far as existing encroachment, I'm not, I'm not sure 100% what that's referring to. We are proposing to grade in that area and to put the underground utilities through. But that that old logging road, as it's depicted on the plans, is an existing road that that's been there. And all we're proposing to do is grade it and improve it in a few locations as shown on the plans.
And when you flagged the location for the DEC, does that include flagging the route in?
Correct. So the 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 flags are shown on the plans, which we actually surveyed and then put the survey of the flag on the plans where the road exists and where our proposed grading is.
Thank you.
So Aziz, any questions from you?
Couple of questions. The first is, is your height of your tower 106 feet or 110 feet? That's my first question.
Sure, the height of the tower and the top of the antennas are 110 feet, which complies with the code. The antennas themselves are eight foot, so the center of the antenna where they attach is the 116 foot level.
Okay, now, so the town of East Fishkill wants to put additional antennas, they will be definitely crossing 110 feet and then of course going above 110 feet. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay, practically, how high can they go? Like 10 feet, 12 feet, 18 feet? I don't know. But normally, what's the average height above 110 feet that they go?
John, I I know the height of whip antennas have come down drastically over the past few years. While in the past, they used to be about 16 feet. Isn't it true now they're closer to eight or 10 feet usually?
It depends on the town's system. So we see everything from on the low end, four feet, to on the upper end, 20 feet. And it's typically a whip style antenna or a dip antenna, but it's still a very, it's a slim member antenna. And and that mounts at the, at the top of the tower. I mean, generally, municipal antennas want to have a clear view all around, unobstructed. So you want them above the carriers and tents.
Okay, and my last question is, if we request that you make it as a fake or false tree, would, how would that affect the base of your structure? Because especially going from a big diameter all the way to the top, 110 feet, let's say, how would it, I mean, what base do you need? And do you have enough sufficient base at the site, knowing that there's wetland and everything else around it?
So so I can address the tree. So for this site, I'm really not in favor of a tree in, for a number of reasons. First of all, let's talk about, the the main reason is that the site is really not going to be visible. So if you look at the visibility maps, what you see is there's a few tiny dots, maybe over by Beekman Golf Course, where you can potentially see the tree. And that's because if you're standing on the far side of the field and you're looking over the trees, that's your best opportunity to see something in the distant, in the distance. Anywhere up close, any of the residential areas, even along the Taconic, you're not going to see the tree. So to spend an extra, you know, $100, $150,000 to put tree branches on is really, is really a waste. And like I said, you're not going to see it. The second thing is is the height. So typically, when you have a tree, you want to have it have a tapered look. So what we tried to do. tried to do is keep all the carriers antennas inside of the branches. And to do that, you have to make sure that the carriers have smaller mounts and that the branches are larger. And as you get closer to the top, the branches tend to taper. So on a tree site, what we like to do is lower the carrier even further or extend the tower a little higher. And then we're able to put smaller branches at the top to create that taper. And then at the very top of the tree, there's a five foot branch section which sticks up and that's kind of like the tip of the, the tree. So in this case, if Verizon, their antennas are topped out at, at 110, you would probably have to add another 10 feet to make an effective looking tree. Otherwise, the tree will look like it's just straight across the top. So that, that's kind of one thing. Another is that, and we've learned this a little bit over time with, with tree installations, that to really maintain a tree, to add carriers, to change out radios, you need to use a bucket truck. You can't really climb up inside the branches because there's just no working room to do that. So what we've learned is it's not even worth putting step bolts and climbing, um, safety climbs on the tree because you just want to get up there with a bucket truck. And that means you really have to round the tower 360 degrees. So when we design sites with trees, we like to make sure that we can get at it from at least two sides. So we can get all aspects because you got to get up there with a bucket truck. In this particular case, we've actually reduced the compound to get down to a bare minimum. And we're trying to minimize any additional clearing of trees beyond the, the main site. So we've got a 45 foot by 65 foot compound. If we were to allow access for, for man lift, we'd have to clear more trees and have more disturbance. And we're, we're trying to do that. Now, that would also push us into the stormwater over an acre requirement.
That's all for right now.
Mary, any questions from you?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if I heard the answer to this. Uh, when the town engineer or the town planner was reading about what the RF expert talked about, about the, the propagation and coverage maps at the other heights, is that included in your application package? Have you, did you do the work at the 80, 90 and 110 foot heights for this tower?
No, again, so I, I will take exception to referring to the consultant as an RF expert. Consultant himself is.
Okay, let me amend that and say that he was the RF consultant.
Okay. And even that, he's, he's stated in many cases that he's not, he's not a radio frequency engineer. But no, the Verizon engineer, who is a radio frequency engineer, explained the reason why the lower height maps are relevant to this particular application, particularly since we are already at the minimum height and the maximum height actually allowed by the code. So they, they would prefer to be higher. And when you look at the maps and the coverage, they would prefer to have more coverage and they've already limited it to 110 feet to meet the code.
Okay, that doesn't really answer my question, but.
Well, the, the answer to the question.
It sounds like if the code were 150, you would do it at 150. And you just started saying that.
They would like to be higher. Absolutely.
But do you achieve the coverage that solves this problem at a lower height?
No. And that's the, that's the point.
And that's in your packet?
Correct. And that's explained in the packet in great detail.
Thank you.
And I would also add that, you know, as part of our review with Verizon, you know, we were trying to get them down into the, the code level, I suppose where they really want it to be. Uh, we, we had them do a drone test so we could see what really their antennas are going to be looking at. And what was apparent from that is that they're very tall trees in the area. So in a couple of directions, you might have 65 or 75 foot trees, uh, but in some directions you have 100 foot trees. So going lower, you, all you're going to do is put the tennis down into the, into the tree canopy. And then in a couple of directions, the antennas are not going to be effective because it'll be covered by leaves in the, in the summer.
Mary, any other questions?
No, Norma, thank you.
Rocco, any questions?
Uh, just a comment, I think. I mean, I agree with Jim in terms of the wetlands. That would be probably my only major concern. As far as seeing the tower, from looking at the abundance of paperwork and hearing the explanations, I don't have a problem with not making it look like a tree. I think that would actually be more visible because it makes sense the way it cuts off at the top and also for maintenance. We don't want to turn it into a maintenance issue that could be hazardous to someone. So no other questions though, I don't think. I'd just like to see the wetland issue resolved adequately.
I would just have one follow up, Norma. And so what was briefly touched on was the height with the FAA. If the town for some reason wanted to put a 20 foot antenna, which would then make this tower 20 feet taller, does that affect the height and whether that was considered in getting that condition, not being conditioned?
Correct. We actually, if you look at the report we submitted from the FAA, we screened it all the way up, an additional 20 feet just for that reason. So in the FAA report, it includes 130 feet, no light, no hazard to air navigation.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay, um, I, there are likely a number of neighbors who want to comment on this. So again, we're going to remind neighbors who wish to comment to raise, use the raise hand feature if you're online or use the star nine feature if you're on the phone. And then Michael Cunningham, our attorney will, who's hosting this meeting, will call on you to speak. So Michael, go ahead.
So the first one who's being allowed to speak is, uh, Mr. Joseph Mechanic?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, yes, I, I own the property immediately adjacent to this proposed tower. And I am concerned that it's going to negatively impact the value of my property, having a 110 foot tower loom over it. So I'm, I'm basically objecting to the proposal.
You're, sorry, you're objecting to it because you think it's going to decrease your property values? Why?
Yes, because I think that a tower looming over the property will be a negative impact in the event that I try to sell the property or try to develop it in any way to have a tower looming over me of that nature.
Okay, Mr. Mechanic, can you please provide us your address? Because I want to ask the applicant to tell us what you're going to be looking.
Well, I have the seven acres that's immediately adjacent to it.
On which road?
Yeah, I'm on Taconic Parkway. So the, the address is, is 1087 Taconic Parkway South. And I'm within 500 feet of the tower.
So I'm going to ask, is there anything else you'd like to raise for our concern here?
Well, I mean, I just believe that it will be negative to my property and my property value. I mean, I think that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, I'm going to ask the applicant to address what's the visual, what's, what is this gentleman going to be looking at south of this property on the Taconic?
Sure.
I think the impact is going to be more impactful further if you're north heading south to this site, based on my sense of the Taconic.
Well, actually, if you look at, if you look at the visual assessment that we provided with the view shed maps, that area is not visible. Uh, the tower is not visible from that area. In fact, the whole 8,042 acres within the study area, only 12 acres did have a visible view or less than 1%. The closest, the closest property line, so the closest property line in the opposite direction is 263 feet and required is 137 and a half feet. So even the closest property line, we well meet setbacks. The area of Mr. Mechanic's property, if I'm looking at the site plan correctly, is down to the southeast. And while it's within 500 feet of the property line, the facility is set back on the 69.058 property in that direction, I believe well over 500 feet. And we can get that exact.
Actually about, actually about 1,100 feet to Mr. Mechanic's property line, to the actual property line. And then the residence would be even further from there.
Okay, thank you. Michael Cunningham, the next speaker.
The next person is, uh, Mr. William Bear. I'm going to allow him to speak now.
Hello, my name is William Bear. I'm at 85 Carpenter Road. Uh, I'm concerned about what the health implications might be for those who live near the tower.
Okay, thank you. Is there anything else you want us to address?
No, uh, but I would like to hear, I would like to have some kind of health impact statement that would be similar to an environmental impact statement.
Okay, thank you. Um, Michael, the act that allows cell towers essentially tells boards that we can't necessarily consider health impacts, correct?
As long as there, as long as there's a certain radio frequency that the application stays within. So, um, the, in some ways, the board's hands are tied as long as the applicants meet the requirements of the federal government in that respect.
And we did submit that report. Nevertheless, I agree with Mr. Cunningham, that issue is federally preempted. But nevertheless, we submitted a report that showed the worst case scenario would be less than 1% of the allowable 100% of the FCC regulations. So we did submit that report. It's in the files from SiteSafe. It includes all of the details and, uh, various requirements with respect to that issue.
Thank you. Unfortunately, the members of the public have not had the opportunity to be able to look at the files that are in the office. So they may not have the advantage of having to be able to read that site. So, okay, Michael Cunningham, are there any additional speakers?
Yes, somebody named Barbara. There's no last name, but allow Barbara to speak.
Okay, I live at 303 Oak Ridge Road. My last name is Corker, C O R K E R. Why do we need this cell tower? We don't have any problems with reception in this area. And we also did, since we don't have the opportunity to view these records, can this be put on hold until we are able to view the records, the documents that Norma is talking about?
Okay, Barbara, is there anything else you wish to offer or have us respond to?
Not like, like the other gentleman said, the health issue and the property value. That's a concern.
Okay, thank you. So as I've already said, we're not going to be closing any public hearings or offering any decisions on any of these public hearings to provide members of the public an opportunity to still give us comments and hopefully be able to review the record now that, you know, the, this area, this county is starting to reopen. So hopefully between now and our next meeting, you will have an opportunity to get into the office and be able to review the file if you so wish. Okay?
And Madam Chair, we'd be happy if, if anyone contacted the office and gave their email address and was passed along to us. We can certainly email documents to anyone if that would make it easier for them.
That would be, probably be very helpful if, if we had people email the town clerk and then the town zoning board clerk, that they, she could then pass that information on or get the file from you and email it on to the folks that have asked. So, so, you know, let's, so let's put it this way. If anybody wishes to have the, the information sent to them, if you can call the zoning board office tomorrow, and my apologies to Jackie for doing this, but, uh, to our new clerk. But if you call the zoning board office tomorrow or sometime this week and just asks to have the information sent to you, then Jackie will follow up and get the information mailed to you. Michael Cunningham, is, are there any other speakers?
Yeah, there's, uh, Mr. John Koch. I'm going to promote him now and allow him to speak. Okay, Mr. Koch, you have to speak now.
Okay. Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I came in a little late, so. It seems like the proposal here and the additional antennas for the town is going to possibly make this over 110 feet. And I'm wondering if it is going to be over 110 feet. If you let the applicant follow these, will the town need a variance when they put that additional footage on over 110 feet?
John, is there any other questions you'd like answered?
Yes. I'd like to know, since you're talking about the tree clearing, you're talking about having it looking like a tree. And they're saying there's no need because it's surrounded by trees. Is there going to be a conservation easement on that hill? Because nobody can tell you if the owner wants to cut all the trees down around there. So that has to be a factor that has to be taken into. If they're going to say the trees are then aren't going to buffer this, then you have to have a conservation easement around there preventing the owner of that property from cutting any of those trees down. Because you don't know what's going to happen in 10 years. That might be totally cut down, clear lot. Okay, now is there any difference? Is this going to be a G5 antenna? I'm curious, is this going to be a G5? And if it's different, since it's a new antenna or G5, is there a larger distance from this to residential homes compared to the previous antennas that have been put up in town?
Okay, John, anything else?
I think that's about it for the time being.
Okay, thank you. So Mr. Arthur or Mr. Gattigo, so, um, so again, the code allows 110 feet. We're going to, we're going to work with you to get that municipal coverage within 110 feet. I don't believe we're looking to have this tower go any higher. John raises an excellent point about a conservation easement. You're telling us you don't want it to look like a tree because of, you know, the, the, a number of reasons that you've raised. I know at our last meeting, we said, you know, we, it was sticking to the 110 feet. And I thought we had a conversation about a tree, but I didn't see it in the minutes. So we may not have, that we said we could likely forego a balloon test. But, um, you know, we, we may come, have to come back to, if you're telling us that the trees in that area are between 65 feet and 100 feet, we may have to come back to having a balloon test just to be able to understand really who's going to see what. But it, so the conservation is, is, is a great idea. Are, is there going to be anything that's going to preserve the, the view shed that drivers along the Taconic see right now in terms of all the trees that are there? And then if you can address the, this tower, whether it's, you're going to be providing the 5G service or not, and whether the radius of service is going to be larger because of that?
So just, just to take a step back, we are not proposing the town antennas. As a voluntary goodwill effort, the applicant has offered to design the towers and to make the space available for the town. So the town's antennas, whether they are current, which they're not, or something speculative in the future, is solely within the discretion of the town. And the town code specifically exempts the police and fire communications of the town for those antennas from the code. So whether there's a variance or not, that's ultimately up to the town. And that's totally in the town's discretion and the applicant shouldn't be penalized for voluntarily making the space available. As far as a conservation easement, again, there's very limited tree removal proposed at the top of the tower. It's a 69.05 acre property and there's no intention to top, you know, to chop down more trees than were shown on the plans. So I think that, just to say, to put a conservation easement on the whole property, I, I don't think there's a real connection to this particular application to be able to impose that type of, you know, drastic solution. As far as 5G, in the expert report from Verizon, it shows the tower is being designed for 4G LTE service and the coverage necessary and the capacity necessary for 4G LTE. Will the tower ultimately be able to communicate with 5G service? Most likely. That's the way, you know, all facilities are being designed. But the need for the site is current. But the need for the site is current for the current 4G LTE needs. And that's all documented in the report.
Okay, I don't think that John or anybody was proposing that we need a conservation on, easement on the entire property. But we did raise the issue about segmentation because nobody is telling us what the property owner is gonna be doing with the rest of the parcel. So it go, does speak to how, if we don't go with a tower, if we don't go with a tree here and we just go with a tower, how do we know that it's going to be preserved with that tree coverage around it if there's no protection for the town in that regard? And there's no plan being told to us as to what the future development of that lot will be? That's the issue we still have to address here. I'm not saying you have to address it right now. I'm just saying that that's still out there. All right, Michael Cunningham, any other speakers?
Yes, there's somebody named Ken. There's no last name, so I'm gonna allow Ken to speak.
Hello?
Ken, you're able to speak now.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. My name is Ken Raymond, and I'm the owner of the property at Two Hammer Drive, which is just down the road from the site that they're actually planning to build this tower on. I happen to be unique in this meeting because I'm one of the few people who actually wasn't a Verizon employee. I was in the high-end technical division of the corporation for up to about 10 years ago. Interestingly enough, I understood exactly what the attorney was speaking about. One curious point, however, was that they mentioned the underground chamber, which in our day was called a CEV. Is this CEV gonna be supporting land-based fiber?
So the, the intention is typically to have a fiber connection to the tower, correct?
Exactly. Now, what is the route of that fiber?
That is the same route as the underground utilities through the existing logging trail access drive.
Okay, well, you can understand why I would ask the question.
Sure.
Additionally, the, if everybody's familiar with the Hutchinson River Parkway, we all know how ugly a very tall fake cell tower is. So just to let you know that I'm not some kind of luddite. You know, I don't have a problem with a tower that's, you know, bare steel, so to speak. But my main concern here is that the CEV hut, because it's a subterranean chamber and because I actually supervise CEV Hudson Bronx County, would be subject to wetland intrusion. Now, what does Verizon intend to do to ameliorate that?
So the, the actual utility connections at the facility are not in the wetlands or anywhere near the wetlands? The utility, the utilities running to the facility cut through a small area of wetlands where the existing access drive is.
Yeah, but, but the hut is gonna be adjacent to the wetlands, am I correct?
Okay, Ken, I need you to direct your comments to the board, and then I will direct Mr. Gaudioso to respond to them as a person.
My apologies for overstepping my bounds here.
That's okay, no problem. So what you're asking, you're asking about, you're saying that this underground chamber and the tunneling that's gonna be required to get the utilities to this chamber, you're questioning whether they will pass through or will be sitting in the wetlands?
Well, not just that, not just that. The whole idea is that I'm not sure of the geography in and around the tower itself, whether or not the, the subterranean qualities of the wetlands would be affected adversely.
Okay.
And, and I'm, like I said, I am familiar with wetland intrusion. I've seen it in Bronx County, unfortunately, near the Hutchinson River. So I'm very, we're very familiar with what can happen. The other thing is, is that I can understand the person who's complaining bitterly about, you know, having to see this thing because I'm actually situated below the level of the hilltop leading towards the Teconic. Unfortunately, my neighbors who were advised of this meeting don't seem to have taken the liberty of approaching. I suspect that they may be able to see this tower.
Okay.
And unfortunately, I don't think anybody's really reached out to them, even though their property borders Carpenter Avenue far closer to the site than I am.
Okay, are there any other concerns you want to bring to our attention?
No, my only big concern here was that they weren't gonna use, let's say, that they weren't gonna tear up Carpenter, let's say past me, you know, putting in fiber optic routing. That's all.
Okay, thank you for your comments.
No, thank you for your time.
Mr. Gaudioso, so I need you to address this. When you say you're gonna be bringing the utilities in through and, you know, the untung, channeling them through, are you, the logging road? Do you mean the logging road off of the Teconic Parkway itself? Or is, is it gonna actually be the access road off of Carpenter?
No, the access drive off of Carpenter, there's no tunneling. It'll just, it'll just be a utility trench. And the actual, just, I appreciate Ken's comments. The actual facility and all the fiber connections to the facility are well upland of where the small area of the wetlands is, where the existing access drive comes through and where the underground utilities will be placed.
Okay, you're, you're saying this, there's a small area of wetlands on this property. My understanding is they're not quite so small. But I'll let you tell us what, since you just had the wetlands flagged, how large the wetland area is.
Well, it's, it's on the plans. It's not that the wetland area is small. It's that the area where the wetlands are, where we will be disturbing is small. So there's a small area of the, of the existing access drive that is encumbered by some of the wetlands and the buffer area where we'll be cutting through to put in the underground utilities.
Okay.
And that's all flagged and shown on the plans that you do have.
Okay. Michael Cunningham, any other speakers?
Yes, there's Ms. Kim O'Donnell. Allow her to speak now. Okay, Ms. O'Donnell, you're able to speak. Ms. O'Donnell?
Go ahead, John.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, got a bad connection. I'm 62 Carpenter Road. And my concern also is possible clearcutting. I can see the top of the hill from my back porch. So that would be my concern there.
Okay, anything else?
You know, especially in the wintertime when the leaves are off. Just wanna know the location and see if I could possibly see it from my back porch.
Okay, John, anything else for this, for the applicant here?
No, that's about it.
Okay, thank you. And let me, Mr. Gaudioso, if you can address, this is the immediate neighbor to this property again, so.
Sure. So as John Arthur mentioned before, we're, we did some very selective tree removal. And on the plans, we have all of the trees delineated as to what will be removed along the access drive and then up at the facility compound. And that's all on the plans to show exactly where they are. And it's fairly minimal, given the wooded nature of the property.
Okay, thank you. Ms., Michael Cunningham, any additional speakers?
Judging by the comments, there are a few other people who, one of them is, I believe it's Mr., he's gonna come in as a different name, it's gonna be Mr. Robert Hoffman. I'm gonna allow him to speak now. Okay, Mr. Hoffman, you're able to speak.
Okay, can you hear me there?
Yes.
Okay, yes, this is Robert Hoffman. My family and myself, we own 90 Carpenter, which is literally right next door. Our driveways from Carpenter Road would butt up. I would have to say cellphone towers, this is not my expertise, but my heart is racing because it's just such a disturbing factor that this is being proposed. Because for 30 years, my brother lives right in the area, 30 years, we always said we're gonna go, we're gonna go. Now we bought this property very recently. We have plans to put the dream forever home on there for the multi-generational thing. And now this is something that's being proposed. And obviously, it disturbs us on, on several different levels. And again, I can't speak professionally as far as a cellphone tower, but as a paying tax, property taxpayer and an individual and in my career and different things there, there definitely is. The one thing that was mentioned was that the 12 acres is only view, the tower will only be viewable from 12 acres. Well, my heart started doing a double beat then because guess how many acres we have? We have 12 acres. So I'm actually curious if those are the lucky 12 acres. That's just what's, you know, be one thing there. I really didn't have much time to prepare for this. I just found out the other day that there's gonna be a Zoom meeting. I was under the impression from Nick, the town supervisor, that this will all follow up. March it was canceled or whenever it was, it's gonna follow up when the town opens up again. So this is all, like I said, brand new to me here. But as I was listening to everything, like I said, which 12 acres are viewable? That's one definitely question there. Then I kept hearing the attorney speak about a, a, a road access. And I could just tell you from personal experience, when that property went up for sale, I took a look at it. I was not interested in it at all because everything along Carpenter Road was wetlands to the best of my recollection, which basically means there's no way I can even access my 70 acres with having to go through that actual portion there. So these old logging trails that are through there, yes, that I definitely agree with. That seems to be common through the area, but there's no roads or anything like that. The current owner has put some wood chips down over it. Basically, I guess, so things wouldn't be that muddy if they're working, walking on the property with everything. He always said that was one thing that he could do because it's actually a natural product. So you can't, I guess, put a driveway in, so to speak, if you're not putting the house in there. So, again, being right next door with the future plan to put the forever dream house in there, multi-fold, multi-generational with the family, it, it is just, I, I guess, disturbing, again, on many levels. Now, from a professional point of view, I'm a Realtor for 20 years. And in today's world, we need to disclose, disclose, disclose. And I think it is a good thing. But I can tell you that there's three things that will definitely affect the property value. And I know that from 12 years of personal experience. If you're next to a cemetery, if you're next to high tension wires, and if you're next to a cell tower, forget it. Half the people are not interested and the other half want it for half price. So I'm very concerned also that this is gonna dramatically affect our, our property value long-term. I don't know if we will see it or not. I can't speak to the safety factors on it there, but we've looked for many years. We have purchased this recently, like I had said. We are close to family. So this is now finally a lifelong dream that's supposed to be coming through. And my heart is racing because it seems like it's a lifelong nightmare that's starting to take place over here. That's just my initial, I guess, thought. I do plan to put together a formal letter that I will mail into the board, so you guys will have a copy for the record there. There were so many different things that were actually said. Do you make it look like a tree? What happens if the owner wants to cut down all the trees? There's so many variables. I'm thankful that I'm not gonna be on the board, but I definitely also am thankful for the opportunity that as a property owner, you give us the chance to really say our piece, say how we feel and, and express our sincere concerns on, on, there's just so many levels. It's not one level at, at all at this point. So I do thank you for that.
All right, thank you very much for your comments. The only question I heard in there was what were the 12 acres that the tower is gonna be visible? So, Robert, if you want to address that?
Sure. Actually, I'd like to ask John to share his screen with the Viewshed map to be able to show that it's really no place anywhere whatsoever close to the property. John, if you could share your screen with the Viewshed map, I'd appreciate that.
So, can everybody see that at this point?
Yes.
Is that coming through?
Yes.
Okay, so this, the yellow dot, and hopefully you can see my mouse move around. I've shared the screen rather than the file. This is the site, the yellow dot in the middle. And this is the, the study area. So what you'll see is that, you know, 99.9% of the visibility is really up here by the Beakman Golf Course, which is kinda where you're expected. Anywhere you have wide open fields, you can look across the field. That's when you, you have a good opportunity to see something in the distance. When you're up close in the tree line, you really can't see anything. And I could just say from my experience, most of these maps, this is probably about the best visibility map I've ever seen because usually the yellow is splattered all over the place. If I can zoom in a little bit, what they're showing is a couple of theoretical dots along the Teconic and a little area over here off of Carpenter Road. The property the gentleman was just speaking to was in here. So it shows no visibility there. Mr. Mechanics' property is actually down here. Again, it shows no visibility in that area as well. In fact, this entire neighborhood, well, it was 300 Oak Ridge. That area, also, there's no visibility in the entire neighborhood.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Michael Cunningham, any additional speakers?
Doesn't look like it. If anyone else wants to make a comment now, you would have to raise your hand, otherwise we're gonna have to move on to another matter.
Yeah, we're gonna keep the public hearing open and we're gonna allow anybody who wants to write comments. And we're likely to keep this open even, you know, again, we'll have another discussion at our next meeting. So this will not be your only opportunity to comment. So we do wanna have you, give you an opportunity to review the file, get additional information. But, you know, at this point, we have to just get things moving a little bit, so.
So there's one new person, Mr. Mark Dettoro. I'll allow him to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're able to speak.
Hi, this is Mrs. Mark Dettoro. I'm calling because I have a question in regards to the cell towers, if they were gonna be 5G. If I had to worry about the safety and the health of my children, I have four. And I'm just concerned in regards to the property value of my house going down. If we were thinking of relocating or putting our house on the market. I also am very, very concerned, again, with the health and the radiation and, you know, what's gonna go in there.
Okay, you did not tell us where you live. Can you give us your address?
I'm at 10 Hammer Drive.
Okay, thank you. Was there, were there any other comments?
That's, that's all.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Gaudioso, you've already addressed the 5G issue. You've said it's gonna be a 4G, but that it wouldn't preclude it from being able to address 5G at some point in the future, if that's appropriate. We've already spoken to the health issue. And property values, we're, you know, that's, we're, we're listening as it relates to that. So, okay, so, Michael Cunningham, are there any additional speakers?
No, every, the only other people have their hands raised, have already spoken tonight. So, so everyone's had an opportunity to speak, has wanted to.
Okay, you need to put somebody on mute. Okay, so, board members, any last questions? Jim, any last questions?
I'm sorry, I was muted. No, thank you.
Okay, Mary, any last questions?
Yeah, just the, the minimal tree clearance. What does minimal mean in this case?
We do have every tree detailed on the plans. I don't have the count off the top of my head, but all the trees that are proposed to be removed are on the plans with an X and a delineation with tree is.
Mr. Gaudioso, please understand that to some extent, we are aware of what the files say. We need the public to be able to understand what the answers are. We need to get this information on a record, so.
Sure, we can put the plan up right now, John. Could you share your screen with the plan? And we can go through that right now.
And actually, I actually happen to have the tree, we did a tree survey for Fish and Wildlife. Have that showing all the trees. It's 53.
53 trees will be removed.
That's correct, a number which are already dead, as it turns out. But, so this is actually a, a small portion of the access road. Shows the trees that were marked. We were asked specifically by Fish and Wildlife to, to document the trees and note what the species are for, for the bat. And then up around the compound, this outline is the compound area, 45 by 65, and a small pull-in parking area. And the trees Xed out, or all the trees. and a small pull-in parking area, and the trees Xed out are all the trees up there. So it's about 20 some odd trees up by the compound, and maybe another 20, let's see, 20 trees below. Site plan. So what was the question on the site plan again?
So the area of the tree removal is this bend right here where there's some
That, that's correct.
So grading, and then the compound is up about 100 feet in higher ground elevation away from the wetlands. And I believe you have the flagged map drawing as well to show that minimal area.
Yeah, so the flag map is right here. Zoom in a little bit. So here's, so here's the access road as it comes in off of Carpenter. These are all the flagged locations. And, you know, so it kind of bends around here. This area right here is where tree removal would be along the road. It's really mainly because of the the grading and the location that some of the trees are right on the road, or some of the trees are actually bending over the road dangerously. And then when you get to, to the compound, it's really just the immediate area where the site is.
And the area where the utilities will go through the wetland flag area, that's closer to Carpenter Road, and that's not where the tree removal is, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for showing us that.
Yeah, this is our first, this is our first time as well doing this, so we appreciate you giving us a couple of minutes to be able to share that screen. We're getting used to the process as well.
Yeah, if it would be helpful, I could, I could bring up the wetlands map. You kind of see where the access road is, because you could actually see it in the picture. Would that be helpful?
Sure.
So here is, and again, there's, there's really a federal and there's a state wetlands. So so where you, where you see the mouse on Carpenter Road, that's really where the access road goes in. And it actually follows this area, really just outside of the wetlands. And then somewhere around here, it bent up the hill toward the site. So, let me see if this is, so this is the, this is the federal location. And so again, you can, you can, you can see in the photo where the road actually is, and it bends up this way. So we're not really in the federal, but the state has a buffer. And you know, that's, you know, we're going to be going through that area. And let's see, here's the, again, the buffer. So here it shows the buffer. So this is why this whole area is in the check zone.
Thank you, John.
Thanks, Norma, and thank you. Appreciate it seeing that.
All right, Aziz, any comment, any additional questions from you?
Yeah, some of the residents, town folks had raised the issue of 5G. So I was wondering, I mean, you mentioned that you have 4G and LTE, which is an established technology, and some of the folks are concerned about the 5G technology. So can you sort of, for the record, you know, let us know, or let the town people know if there are any health issues or, or any other issues that either Verizon or you're, or you have been aware of in reference to the 5G technology that is up and coming. And that's the only question I have. Thank you.
So the, the, the report that we submitted actually included the four different frequency bands that's proposed for this facility. And even among all those four bands with the technology that's proposed, it's less than 1% of the federal limit. So it's very safe. It's completely in compliance with the federal limits. And, and the facility itself, most importantly, given the height at 110 feet, and the fact that the closest property line is 263 feet away, there's no exposure to anyone close to the facility. This isn't a small cell on a utility pole close to a residence that might be within very close proximity. This is completely distant from the residences. And that was one of the things that was also in Verizon's report about the location of the facility. When you look at Verizon's maps, and you look where their search area was, they chose a location in conjunction with Mr. Arthur that is not only on a large 69-acre property, it's very distant from where the dense residential areas are. And I think that's borne out then by the Viewshed map that John shared a little while ago. So I think all of those factors combined strictly on the regulations, the facility's safe, completely in compliance with the federal limits, but also from a practical standpoint, quite frankly, the facility's towards the middle of a 69-acre property, which is unusual in areas that have dense residential neighborhoods.
Okay, thank you. Aziz, any other questions?
No, there was just one question concerning, and again, that was to put it on the record for the, for the town folks.
Great, thank you very much. Rocco, any last questions?
I don't have a question. I just want to echo a sentiment that Aziz said. There is a lot of controversy right now about 5G and its effects on health. So I think that's just something that should be entered into the record. And maybe at the next meeting, if some of the town people want to comment on that. I don't know the truth of it, but I think it is something that needs to be explored maybe a little further.
Okay, thank you. So I am going to ask for a motion to adjourn the public hearing. We will, again, anybody who wishes to can submit written comments between now and our next meeting, or you can come to the next meeting and provide any additional comments or questions at that time. So do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
I make a motion to adjourn the public hearing till next, till June.
Second.
Thank you, Aziz and Rocco. So I got to get back to my votes as follows. Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Can I just ask one question? The June meeting date, and the reason I ask is, there's a federal law that, that sets a timeframe for these types of facilities. It expires on June 6. We're hap, we're happy to mutually extend that date out, but we would just need to know the date of the June meeting to be able to do that.
It's, it's at the top of our agenda.
June 23rd.
Yes, thank you, June 23rd.
So could we, could we agree to extend the, the federal shot clock to June 23rd?
Well, we need to extend it beyond that anyway.
Yeah, well, typically, we only extend to the next meeting, and, and if we needed to extend it past then, we could certainly have that discussion. I don't have any objections to that. We're, we're just trying to make sure we keep the record clean with the, with the dates.
So I, just the, the reason I'm bringing it up is, I, I still, obviously, the public hearing's still open. I don't think you're getting any sort of decision order next time, whether they're up or down. So I would think we should at least push it to July at this point, if you'd agree to that.
I, I can only agree to the June 23rd, but what I can agree is that, you know, either at or before June 23rd, we can certainly have a further conversation and, and look to push it out to the July meeting.
Let's just go to June 23rd for right now.
Yeah, that, that's all we're really seeking to do.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, Norma.
That's the, that's the motion that's on the table, and that's what we've taken a vote on, so.
Norma, you have to vote also.
Okay.
Thank you. I wasn't quite finished there yet. So, okay, so we have the motion, a second. I've taken the votes. My vote would be to adjourn it to the June meeting. So with that, Mr. Arthur and Mr. Gariosa, thank you very much for your attendance.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move on to our next item. Item number seven, appealed 3946 for Shaw, Patricia and Joseph Forshaw, 32 Louise Lane, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot by 12-foot shed to remain in front of the house and a two-foot height variance for approximately 38 feet of existing six-foot fence as the property has frontage on three roads pursuant to Section 194-107B 3 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Aziz, seconded by Jim. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco? I, myself, I, so our, our public hearing is open. Mr. or Mrs. Forshaw, are you with us?
So can you please raise your hand, and if you're dialing in, can you hit star nine? We have no hands raised.
Okay.
One just did, one just did, put the phone number.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Let me just give an overview real quick. So this is, this is a property that has three front yards. It's bordered on Tina Lane on one side, Louise Lane in the front of their house, and then Zerna Boulevard on the other side. The applicants, when we met with them at the last meeting that we had back in February, they explained they had very, very little backyard. They have a pool in their backyard. So there's no real room in their backyard for the, the shed to be able to go. Realistically, most, most people would consider where they have their shed to be in their side yard, but because it is fronts on, it has frontage on Tina Lane, it definitely is a front yard there. But it's far enough back, it's technically, it sits behind the house, although, you know, from a front yard perspective, it doesn't. So, you know, it's very unobtrusive. The questions that we had, actually, one of the things you said was, one of the reasons you wanted the six-foot fencing, and it sounds like somebody needs to mute their, mute themselves here. There's some feedback coming through. So it sounds like what you said at the last meeting was that you needed the fence for screening for the rider mower and, you know, for another equipment that you had. There was an RV in your, in your yard that you said was either being moved out because you're trying to sell this house. So is there anything else that Mr. or Mrs. Forshaw would like to add to that, so just so that we have it on the record for your neighbors?
No, no, that's about it.
Okay, so we have both of you. Good. Okay, so are there any questions? And Jim, do you have any questions for the Forshaws?
No, thank you.
Okay, Aziz, any questions?
I'm good.
Mary, any questions?
No, no questions.
And Rocco, any questions?
No, I remember asking a bunch of them. I'm good.
Good, thank you. So is there anyone here, is there anyone who wishes to speak for or against the request from Patricia and Joseph Forshaw, 32 Louise Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow an eight-foot by 12-foot shed to remain in front of their house and a two-foot height variance for approximately 38 feet of fencing of the existing six-foot fencing? If, if so, please indicate on the screen that you wish to raise your hand or star nine, and Michael Cunningham will recognize you. Michael, any raised hands?
Nobody's raised their hands.
Okay, so board members, do I have a motion to close the public, oh, no, we're not closing, sorry. We're going to provide additional comment period for anybody who didn't, wasn't able to be able to speak tonight. So do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's public hearing to June?
So moved.
So moved by Aziz, seconded by Jim. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
Okay, great. So this matter is adjourned. Folks have until June 9th, I think it is, to attend, this, this day is to be able to provide written comments. Okay, item, yes?
Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome. Have a good evening. So item number eight, appeal 3948 to Silva, Lynn's to Silva, 116 Old State Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence to remain in front of the front line of this house pursuant to Section 194-98B of the zoning ordinance. The existing dwelling is located in a B1 zone. So do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Moved by Aziz, seconded by?
Second.
Rock, well, Rocco put up his hand. I saw that, sorry. Vote, vote as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, I. So the public hearing is now open. So Lynn's to Silva, he bought this property a little over a year ago. He did not put up the fence. It offers privacy. If I, for the board members, I did send you a Google Map aerial, so you can see what this fence looks like. There, it, this fence is not new. This fence is not in even great shape. It's, it means it's clearly standing, but it's a long stretch. It's not white. It's, it's definitely weathered. So we didn't talk about if you're going to put any landscaping in front of this fence, but it is definitely a very, very long stretch of fence. But you've got a very clear yard there, so I can understand why you're interested in keeping that fence because of the privacy that it offers for your yard. We do have a question from the, that came up at the last meeting about whether you've gotten your permit for the wood stove yet and whether the excavator is gone. You said that there was an excavator on the property because you were doing some properties, some, some work on the property. So if Mr. De Silva is there, if you can give us an update as to where you're at right now.
Okay. Um, my excavation is still here. I just fixed my, regrade my backyard, and the problem is in a couple next week, so I'm going to move out. And the fence, like I say, that's no new, but that's a good shape. It's still in good shape. It's not wrong with the fence.
Okay, how about the wood burning stove?
Oh, I know that it has the, the fine inspection. I, I have the CO already.
Oh, you do? Okay, good. That's what we needed to know. Okay, that's good. I mean, I will tell you, when I look at Google Maps, which I don't know how old this image is, I'd have to go and see. I didn't pull a date on it. You can see through the, through the fence a little bit. That's why I was just curious whether you're just leaving the fence as is, or you're going to replace it. Again, I do understand it definitely is a privacy issue because your yard truly is cleared. But if this fence wasn't there, you know, kids or any, but pets would definitely be running, you know, would have a greater opportunity to run out into the street. Okay, so the question is, are you proposing any landscaping on the others, the outside of this fence to just soften its look a little bit?
Well, I can do some landscaping if the town let me raise the grade in front yard.
If we let, don't let you raise the grade?
No, if the town let me raise the grade, because the road that's come down, that's like a hill that's go to my yard. So if they let me raise the grade, you know, if, if at the same elevation of the road, so I can put some tree, I'm already started to do some landscaping in front of my property.
Okay, do you have a drainage easement or anything in your property? Is that why it's graded? I can definitely see from the road how it goes down. Is that a swell, or is that just the natural contour of the land there?
That's like a natural.
Okay, so there's no drainage easement or any, and that is your property over there?
Nothing.
Is that your property there? Where that, where it goes down, it seems to be a little bit a ways from your fence.
Oh, yes.
So where are you suggesting you need to raise the grade?
I'm, I'm sorry, say again?
Where are you suggesting that you need to raise the grade to be able to put in some landscaping? I'm not, I, I think I'm just looking for a couple bushes to just break up the monotony of this very, very long fence.
Well, I can do that. That's no problem.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't look at a whole line of bushes or anything. I just, with a couple plantings here and a couple plantings there, would truly just soften up the look of that fence.
Okay, no problem, I can do that.
Okay, all right. Um, Jim, any questions for you, for the applicant?
Well, thank you.
Aziz, any questions for the applicant?
I'm good.
Mary, any questions for the applicant?
No, I don't have any questions.
And Rocco, any questions for the applicant?
No, never mind.
Okay, so at this point, if there is anyone here who wishes to speak for or against the request from Lynn's to Silva, 116 Old State Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance to allow a six-foot fence to remain in front of the front line of the house, please star nine if you're on the phone, or indicate, raise your hand so that we can recognize you. We will not be closing the public hearing this evening. Again, we will, we will keep it open until June to give anybody who wishes to an opportunity to comment and writing if they wish. Michael Cunningham, any raised hands?
We raised our hands.
Okay, so do I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing to June?
So moved.
Second.
All right, who was the so moved? Sorry. Mary, was that, was that you? No, okay, so Rocco, so that, so and so votes, and a seconded by Jim, so votes as follows, Jim? And so votes, and a seconded by Jim, so votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye, so our, this public hearing is adjourned until June, folks, thank you for joining us this evening. We'll see you next month.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, so that's it for our public hearing, so there will be no additional comment this evening on any of our applications. But we're gonna move forward with our review, so we're gonna start with number nine, appeal 3916 Gogritiani, Vladimir Gogritiani, 3569 Route 52 Stormville is amending his request for a two-foot sideline and a 73-foot front line variance for a pre-existing detached garage built in 1944, a 38-foot front line variance for a pre-existing 644 square foot dwelling also built in 1944, and an expansion of a non-conforming structure in order to construct an eight, a eight, nine, 891 square foot addition had been amended from 247 square feet to the dwelling pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations in section 193-123 of the zoning ordinance. If Mr. Gogritiani is on the line, can you please either raise your hand or press star nine if you're on the phone? Michael, is there anybody?
Nobody raised their hands.
Okay, um, we, at the, at our last meeting or the last time we talked about this one, we did ask Pam, our clerk, to send a letter to him, we did understand he was working with an architect, so it could just be that he's not ready to come back in. So I'm just, I think I'm willing to just let this one, let it, let him, give him a bye for this month, just in case, you know, the technology didn't work for him. And then we'll, let's see if he shows up next month, okay?
I agree.
Okay, so next, item number 10. Appeal 3925 William Tell Hardware, Dave Tell of William Hardware, of William Tell Hardware, sorry, 827 Route 82, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 10-foot sideline variance for a proposed building, a seven-foot variance for our, for parking circulation, 0.9% variance for the floor area ratio, and a four-foot height variance for a proposed 10-foot fence and a variance to the parking requirements in order to allow six less parking spaces than required pursuant to sections 194-17, 194-18, and 194-361 of the zoning ordinance. Is Mr. Tell or Ms. Tell available? If you so, please raise your hand on the computer or star nine so that we can recognize you. Michael, anybody?
Nobody raised their hands.
Okay, they were sent a letter on March 5th, uh, because it was their third no-show. But again, because of technology, I think I'll give them a one more pass if the board agrees, and then if they don't show up in June, we'll just consider their application abandoned.
Yeah, I would agree with that.
Okay. So moving on, number 11. Appeal 3934 Burke, Mary Burke of Fishkill is requesting a variance to build on an undersized vacant lot, 0.998 acres in an R2 zone located at 259 Long Hill Road, as well as a 40-foot variance to the required lot depth pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations in section 194-134 of the zoning ordinance. Ms. Burke, if you can please either raise your hand on the computer or press star nine on your phone so that we can recognize you. Or if, if she has a professional, because at the last time we saw her, we did ask, encourage her to get a professional. Michael Cunningham, anybody?
No hands have been raised.
Okay, so again, in the interest of technology, we'll consider this a no-show, give her another month. Item number 12, appeal 3940 Tusa, Freddie Tusa, 4 Helen Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 35-foot front line and 77-foot front line variance for a 10-foot by 14-foot shed under construction for which no building permit was issued, a two-foot height variance for 230 linear feet of proposed six-foot fencing to be located in front of the dwelling on Route 82, a 42-foot front, front, front line variance for the Helen Road side of the house and a 77-foot front line variance for the Route 82 side of the house, which was built in 1951 pursuant to sections 194-107B3, 194-98, 194-121, and 194A2 of the zoning ordinance. The property has frontage on both Helen Road and Route 82. So Mr. Tusa, if you are on the line, please indicate on your phone by pressing star nine or on your computer, press raise your hand.
Mr. Tusa's here, so he's able to speak.
Okay, good. So Mr. Tusa, we have had the opportunity to meet with you once before. We do know, you know, where your property is, you're, you're kinda to the, if you're coming up and at the intersection of Lake Walton Road there and Route 82, Joe's Dairy Barn is gonna be kind of off to the right, the pizza place and the memorial and the tattoo, all that's gonna be in front, and then you're right to the left of that. So you started construction of a shed, it was brought to your attention that you have issues about really putting pretty much anything on your property. We did encourage you when we saw you last to get a survey of the property because we were concerned that the fence that you have there is not even on your own property. So we, you know, like I said, encouraged you to get a survey, the survey is now in front of us, thank you. And so, yeah, that's definitely showing that the fence that you have on Route 82 is not on your property. The deck in the front of your house literally looks like it is on your property line, might even be over your property line, but we all know this house was built in the, in the 1940s, so 1940s or 1950s, 1951. So obviously, that's not your doing, so, but you're proposing to put a shed all the way at the very, very end, you've started building this shed all the way at the very, very end of your property. So, and can you please explain to us where are you proposing the six-foot fence to go?
Mr. Tusa, you're gonna have to enable your audio, I've been trying to unmute you, but it hasn't worked so far.
Mr. Tusa? Mr. Tusa? Michael, has he unmuted or no?
No, and I, I'm trying to unmute him, so I don't think he's authorized, um, his computer to allow him to speak.
Oh. Do we need to provide the phone number for him to call in?
We can do that, um, I can get it out.
Hold it up to the screen.
Oh, there he is, oh no, that's Jim, sorry. So I mean, I know Mr. Tusa was looking to create a safe area for his children and his pets to be able to use some of their property there, and they've got, you know, a decent sized property there, but unfortunately, because of its proximity to Route 82 and the fact that there's just this little post and rail fence, it makes it very difficult for, you know, him to be able to put any kind of, you know, fence up there beyond a typical four-foot fence, which frankly, would probably do the job, but...
Did you see the chat notice from Mr. Tusa saying hello?
Yes.
And I'm putting the, the phone number in there for Mr. Tusa, and now I'll put the webinar ID for him to input.
All right, so Mr. Tusa, there's a phone number in there?
To dial, and then you can input that, the second number, once you're prompted for it.
So if you can call on your phone. No, no, we're not gonna call you, you have to call that phone number that Michael Cunningham put on the, in the chat box. It's the 1929 number, and then you'll need that second number underneath it as the, your access code. If you can just indicate to us, Mr. Tusa, whether you're trying to call in or... Okay, um, Michael, what are our options here?
So, okay, so Mr. Tusa, so if you, if you can indicate via chat that you've called in, that would be great, I haven't seen your number pop up yet. Because you're gonna have to call in, otherwise we're gonna have to move on to another matter, because we have to, we have to hear you speak in order to progress this tonight.
Right. If you just wanna wait till next month, just, just put that in your, in the chat box as well, and we can do that.
All right, Mr. Tusa, so we'll give you about, you know, maybe 20 more seconds or so, maybe 20, 30 seconds, and then we're gonna have to move on.
Going once. Going twice.
I guess we can also move on, if he connects with Michael, we can bring him back, so.
Yeah, because Michael, you now see what his phone number is based on the phone number he put in the chat box, so if you see that show up, if you could let us know, all right? So, all right, I'm sorry, Mr. Tusa, but we're gonna move on, if we do see that you've called in, we'll come back to you. So we're gonna go on to item number 13, which is appeal 3947 Duffy, Lauren Duffy, 20 Bike Hill Road, Hopewell Junction is requesting a 357 square foot variance in order to build a 1,230 square foot detached garage pursuant to section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. The square footage of the frontage of the, of the footprint of the existing dwelling is 1,456. So...
You're able to speak now.
Okay, so, so Duffy's were in, we've already seen them at the last meeting, we brought it to their attention that the rear of the property, including where they were proposing to put this detached garage, was in a floodplain, the, the rear 115 feet of their property, where it backs up onto the Conic Parkway and then coming in, is all floodplain. Anybody who drives up the Conic Parkway that way is clearly know, has seen lots and lots of water over there. So, you know, there, we did raise some issues about there were some, two open permits on the property, and there was a shipping cart and a, a big shit, shipping crate on the property that you said you were using for storage of things like motorcycles and other things that you actually want the garage to be able to use. So one of the things we had suggested was because of the floodplain that you get an, an engineer onboard to be able to assist you. So if you can give us an update as to where you are, we would appreciate that.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good, just wanted to make sure first. Um, yes, actually, we did submit the drawing that you requested from the engineer. I believe you guys should have that on, on my file.
I don't, I didn't get anything new with this application, so...
It was actually dropped off to the town by the engineer.
Do we know when?
Um, I can look back quickly in my phone for the exact date if you would like, let me see what date, if there's a date on this.
Is Brian's?
March 2nd?
Yeah, I have something from Brian.
March 2nd.
Correct, yes.
Okay, good, thank you.
So on there, I included the, the drawing of what would be in the garage, and then also they did the mapping out that you had requested from me.
Okay, good, um, so you're, you're proposing to move the garage forward?
Correct, yes.
So the plan, Jackie, that you had up on the screen was not the most current plan.
Is that the plan right there?
Um, yes, that's it.
Okay, so that's the inside of it, and then the, there's a floodplain map here. Okay, but where's the site plan, where's the?
There we go.
Map of the property. Oh, so you're, you're not, you're just moving it up just a little bit? Just literally inside the floodplain area?
Yes, I can't move it up to the middle of the property because my septic fields are there.
Okay, well, if I had it... Why can't you move it up to the edge of the blacktop?
If I had it at the edge of the blacktop, I have no access to my backyard. If, God forbid, I had to dig my septic, or when I get it pumped, or if I have a pool issue, because that's the only access, the left-hand side of the house is a steep hill that you can't even get a vehicle on. That's my only access to my backyard.
So you're gonna propose to extend your driveway all the way back there?
No, I'm not gonna have a driveway back there because it's, it's just storage for the cars, they won't be driven. It's just to preserve them.
Okay. It looks like there's a, like a turnaround area and everything, like, is that a gravel area in the front?
Um, in the front of my property? No, it's all grass.
No, in the front of the garage, in front of, in the, in front of the proposed garage.
Um, no, that's gonna be a whole grass area. It's not gonna be a turnaround area, that's just grass, I'm not sure. I think those are just more of the lines to give the, of what the information is on the right-hand side, but, no, there's not gonna be no turnaround.
Okay, and so I can't read any measurement here, it's just too small, can we, to tell us? Well, hold on, I have the plan here, let me take a look and see. I'm assuming that side yard meets the setback requirement on that side, 26 feet, yes, so that works.
Correct.
So you're proposing to build a three-bay garage?
Yes.
Um, how tall is this structure gonna be?
It's 14-foot high to the top of the garage, like, I guess the top, and then approximately, do you mean to the ridge or just the top of the building itself?
Is it gonna have a second floor, that's what I'm getting at?
No, oh, actually, no, no, oh, no, sorry, no, definitely not.
You'd be amazed what happens in this town, so... Okay, so Jim, any questions from you? Aziz, any questions from you?
No, I'm good.
Mary, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
And Rocco, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Okay, so do I have a motion to set this for a public hearing for next month?
So moved.
Second.
By Rocco, seconded by?
Aziz.
Aziz, thank you. Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye, so Ms. Duffy, we will see you next month. If you get, can get any letters from any of your, your neighbors, that would be helpful, but otherwise, we'll see you next month for your public hearing.
Okay, so there is no sign that I have to pick up or anything to put on the yard or anything along that lines?
Um, there is, Michael or Jackie, how does she get a sign at this point? I know she's got a couple days, but how does she get a sign?
Um, that's a good question. We haven't had that yet. Whoa, we can certainly, we can meter, if she calls ahead, we can have somebody meter and bring it outside.
Okay, she's just, if somebody can, Ms. Duffy, do, if we have your email address, if you can call Town Hall, give them your email address, and then they can email you the instructions for your sign? All right, and then, then you'll be able to call them and just pick up the sign when you're ready.
Okay, and as regards to the letters, just a quick question, is it a letter that I generate to my neighbors or that's something that you guys provide and that I just pass out?
It, it's something that the town will do for you. Again, that's what's part of what's in your, the instructions that we would normally hand you at the meeting, so...
Right.
Oh, this is crazy.
All right, so then I should just call, I know, right?
So yeah, if you can, if you can call Jackie, the clerk, tomorrow or sometime this week and give her your email address, then she can email you the instructions, okay?
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Yep, you're very welcome, we'll see you next month.
Okay, have a good night.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Okay, for a public hearing. And Norma, Mr. Tusa thinks he fixed his microphone, he sent a message, so we can try one time if you want.
Okay, so Miss, we're gonna go back to item number 12, Mr. Tusa, are you there?
I'm allowing him to speak now. Mr. Tusa, can you hear us? You can unmute yourself. Mr. Tusa? You're unmuted now, Mr. Tusa, you can speak.
All right, he's gonna have to call in.
Yeah, Mr. Tusa, you're gonna have to call in, unless you can start speaking, because you're unmuted now. Hands raised, you can start talking, otherwise we're gonna have to move on, you're gonna have to call in.
Okay.
Okay.
We're gonna move on again. If, again, Mr. Tusa, if you can call, then we'll try to get to you that way. Okay, I had previously said there was no action on item number 14 this evening, that's been pushed off till June, so we are up to item number 15, appeal 3951 Cole. Emily Cole, representing Bonnie Holman, but I understand Bonnie Holman will be here herself, 111 Old Pec Slip Road, Carmo, is requesting a three-foot front line variance for an existing eight-foot by eight-foot mudroom addition pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations. So Ms. Holman, are you there? Could you, if you can star nine if you're on the phone, or if you can raise your hand?
I think you can speak, I think I already promoted you.
Okay, hi.
Hi.
Yeah, this is Bonnie Holman. Okay, so if you can tell us what you're looking for, we'd appreciate that.
Um, there is a mudroom in the front part of our house that was put on in 20-something years ago. And there's, it's like three feet short to the, to the property line on the road. I should say that they came out and we couldn't find the stake. They would show whether it was in my stone wall somewhere to the 50 feet or not. So we either could have tried to get a variance or we would have had to get a surveyor in here. We didn't wanna have to pay a surveyor. So it's really, basically, I think they measured from the, from the stairs, the base of the stairs of the mudroom.
What? It's 47 feet to the rock wall, and then there's another 10.
It's 47 feet to the front of the?
Rock wall.
Rock wall.
And then 10 feet to the road.
And then 10 feet to the road. Hello? Oh.
Sorry, I just had myself unmute again, thank you. Somebody needs to make this map a little bit bigger for us to see the survey numbers on here.
Okay.
The, the 10 feet in front of your stone wall may be the right-of-way, so that may not be your property.
Correct.
So, yeah, so you just have the 47 feet, but for your, but aside from that, so, so that, that mudroom's been on there for 20 years. So you did not, did you install that mudroom or no?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Originally, there was just an open porch there.
Okay.
And we closed it in.
So there was a structure there, it just wasn't?
Yeah, it was open, it was like an open?
Porch.
Porch.
Okay.
There way to get in the front door.
Okay.
I mean, there's no heat in there or anything, it's basically just a closed-in mudroom.
I hear you.
We got good prompt in there.
Was it done with a permit or no? It was just, you just closed it in?
No, we just kinda did it ourselves.
Okay, all right.
But they inspected it and it passes all the inspections now, as far as a building.
Yeah, it's built properly.
Okay, Ray or Rick, can you join, can you comment on that? Has somebody been out there recently?
Yeah, I was there.
So.
Oh, hi.
Inspection on it and then found that it didn't meet setbacks to the road.
Right.
But everything else was fine on it.
Okay, um, can I just ask, why is this coming up now?
Um, we have our house on the market to sell.
That's fine, I was just curious, why, why are we doing this?
Yeah.
Nobody's complaining, why, why?
I know, we've had this with neighbors for 38 years, so.
That, that's fine, so, so let's, let's fix this. Jim, any questions for the applicant from you?
No, thank you.
Um, Aziz, any questions for the applicant from you?
Oh, no, no questions.
Uh, Mary, any questions for the applicant from you?
Uh, no questions.
And Rocco, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
So do I have a motion to let this go on for public hearing for June?
So moved.
Seconded.
So it moved by Aziz, seconded by Rocco. Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So we'll see you next month for a public hearing. If you heard what we just told the last applicant, if you can call Town Hall, call Jackie, our zoning board clerk tomorrow or sometime this week, and give her your, your email address, she'll be able to send you the instructions for your sign and then we will figure out how to get you a sign.
Okay, very good, thank you very much.
All right, have a good evening.
You too. Bye.
All right, item number 16. Appeal 3952 Hannah, Michael and Tiffany Hannah, 43 McEwen Terrace, Hopewell Junction, are requesting a two-foot height variance for 32 linear feet of six-foot fence to be located in front of the front line of their house, as well as a variance to allow the good side of the fence to face them pursuant to Section 194-98b of the zoning ordinance. Mr. or Mrs. Hannah, if you can raise your hand or press star nine on your phone so we could recognize you.
Yep, I raised my hand.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, just looking to get a fence installed to match the same side as my neighbors on 43, 41 McEwen.
Okay. Um, and you can always put the finished side on two sides. Why are you asking for the finished side to be on your side?
Um, more along the lines of just an expense issue.
Okay, but your neighbor is not, is entitled to look at a finished side of a fence? That's the, right, that's the reason the code was written that way?
I understand that neighbors have, I believe they're on tonight with us here. And they've, they have no objection whatsoever to keep the, I guess, from the back of the yard all the way to the front, the same appearance on both sides.
So they have a fence on their side, on their property, that's finished, with the finished side facing you?
Correct.
And then you're gonna put a fence on your property essentially where the one leaves off?
Correct, one where it leaves off to the front side of, in front of the house.
Okay. Um. And so why wouldn't we put the finished side facing them?
For appearance, to keep continuity between the old fence, their, their fence and our fence.
Well, their, excuse me, their fence, the finished side is facing you, so if you put a fence up there, they're not gonna see your fence anyway, right?
And the fact that they're not connected.
No, they're not connected, no.
Could be one in front of the other.
I'm sorry, what's that?
It's gonna be one in front of the other, which means they won't see the unfinished side, correct?
No, they will.
No.
No.
If you think about it, one's gonna go, you know, I'm just using numbers, one's gonna go 60 feet straight, the other one's gonna pick off where that 60 feet ends and go from there for another 30-some-odd feet.
I see, okay, I misunderstood.
32 feet.
And now, yeah.
32 feet, yes. And like I said, my, my neighbor, she's a, she's, she's asking me right now to unmute her if they can.
You can't, this is not, this is not a public hearing, so we're, we're only here to talk to you right now. This board needs to understand your application before we hear from any neighbors, okay? You are welcome to get her to write a letter, she does not have to come when we schedule this for a public hearing. But, you know, what I'm worried about is that's the neighbor right now. Um, at some point in the future, that neighbor may not be there and I don't know what that, how old that fence is and at some point, they may wanna refinish there or replace that fence and you may have another neighbor who may be looking at that and saying, why isn't the finished side on there, facing them? So.
I, I understand that and they, they actually would like the unfinished side because of the same reason that I want the finished side, where continuity between the fences.
What does this fence look like?
It's a six-foot-high cedar dog-eared fence. And their fence is only one year old, I think it may be a year, maybe not even a year old. So to keep the same look exactly going forward.
So when you say unfinished, you just mean unstained?
No, he actually wants the good side, he wants the good side facing his house instead of facing out. A six-foot fence, the good side is supposed to face out.
Correct.
Right, but the unfinished side is just non-stained.
No, the unfinished side has all this, all the framing structure to hold on the brackets.
Gotcha, okay.
Correct, yes, and they prefer to have the backside again, just for the continuity between their fence and the fence we are proposing in, on our yard.
Yeah, I understand that argument, on the other hand.
Yep.
Again, I mean, the idea, especially since it's one thing when their fence ends so far back, you want yours to come all the way up near the road, past the front of your house.
Well.
And what's the height, what's the height you're asking for?
Six feet.
Six feet.
Six feet, and.
It's a privacy issue for the height of the, excuse, sorry.
Why to the front of the house?
Correct, it's a privacy issue.
Why to the front of the house?
I'm sorry, say that one more time?
Why extending past the front of the house?
The trees that are, are there provide no privacy anymore. They're, they are dead and they have to be removed in order for the fence to be in place. They used to provide privacy years ago, from my understanding from the neighbors that have lived, that are in question, my next-door neighbors here.
Privacy to what? I mean, you're, you're doing something.
Neighbors across the street.
Again, so if you go from the front of the house back, I don't know how extending to the, beyond the front line of your house towards the street, I don't know how that gives you privacy in your backyard.
Well, if you could take a street view of it, you could see right into our backyard. And whereas the trees that were there, the evergreen trees that, that are currently there, they're all dead on the bottom.
How, how far from the house is your proposed fence?
Um, I believe it's about 20 feet from the side of our house.
I mean, you gotta, you're gonna really have somebody trying to stand in front of your house to see much of anything, something going on behind it, I don't know if you're gonna be raid along the fence.
There, there is a pool right back there and that's part of the privacy as well.
Yeah, but your neighbor's fence should be giving you that privacy.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not talking directly there.
In fact, if, if you, if you go between the gap between the two fences, you could actually get a better view of your pool than from the front of your house. In fact, if your fence ended at the front corner of your house, parallel distance, it's almost impossible to see there to go back to your pool.
The neighbor's fence is actually in the backyard, they cannot extend it any further forward to the front of their house because of the property line, how it sits.
Well, that I don't know.
It's on their driveway.
And theirs is a six-foot fence as well?
Correct, yes, I, I honestly think that you would have to come and take a look to see what I'm referencing here.
Okay, um, I think I wanna hear from the neighbors about this one and just see, but you, you have two sheds on the back of your property?
No, one shed. What appears back there was removed before I purchased the house three years ago.
Okay, so those two boxes back there, the two sheds are, are not there?
There was only one there. The other one was a, a smokehouse that the previous owner had built, but it's been knocked down.
Okay, so that one shed, though, is not the proper side yard that it's supposed to be? Do you, did you do the amnesty or do you have a variance for that?
That was a variance that was given before I even purchased the house.
Okay, just making sure we're good with that, thank you. All right, Jim, questions from you for the applicant?
No, I, I raised my, I don't think I have any more, I'm not quite sure why it has to go front, but, okay.
Yeah, I'm not exactly seeing it either, but I'll explore it more. Uh, Aziz, any questions for the applicant from you?
Um, so the applicant is only proposing a fence along one side that already has a partial fence. What about the other side, what's the situation on the other side?
The other side, um, there's a slight access to, to the back, but it's only about six feet wide. And it only shows to the, basically to the side, there's no real visual from the street.
Okay, so where the pool is, from one side, where the pool is, you don't have an issue of privacy, but for whatever reason, you have an issue of privacy from where the existing fence is, is that right?
Correct, from, from where the existing fence is, people standing on the street, there have been plenty of people walk the street and jog daily now with the weather, okay? And, um, neighbors across the street, across the street from my neighbor's actually house can see right into our backyard, you know? My neighbors do, um, their pool is not private because of a fence not being there.
Can I just ask, why not put a pool, a fence more directly around the pool itself?
It is an above-ground pool that sits about four feet, I think, I'm guessing, off the ground. But honestly, you'd have to see it to understand what I'm referencing here.
I mean, it just seems to me that you could put two panels of fence or three panels of fence in a strategic way on the corner of that pool without 20 feet or so and get you all the privacy that you could need.
Or make it L-shaped so you still, you don't have to go in front of the house, I don't know.
Okay.
And then, and you don't need a variance, that's, that's my point, so.
There, there wouldn't be any privacy. Again, I, I, it's, it's a, before, you'd have to see it to understand what we're referencing.
If you made it L-shaped so it curved, it bent to the back of your house, you'd have complete privacy, you have more privacy than what you're proposing.
Uh, unfortunate.
If it was L-shaped so that the first, where it starts from the back, it goes towards the house, if you then went to the house, you would have no gap between the house and your fence for somebody to look down. You would have more privacy and you don't extend to the front of your house the six-foot-high fence.
Okay.
That's exposed to the outside.
And, and it limits access to the backyard, so I don't have access then.
We have, if it's 20 feet from your house, where you have it drawn, you have another 20 feet on the other side.
The, the trees are there right next to the driveway of my neighbor. That property line is basically their driveway.
So, so access for what?
To, to gain access to go around to the, to the back of my house.
For what?
From that side of the property.
For what?
Access there now, if you're proposing to block it off.
To walk through, all you needed a gate.
Okay, and what about privacy from the front of the house? The house does sit about 10 feet lower than the road. So.
Where does the, where does the pool sit?
Right over the fence.
But where does the pool sit?
The pool is about 125 feet back from the house. It's not just a pool, I have three young daughters that play in the backyard there.
What I'm saying is, if you're saying that the house sits 10 feet lower than the road, does the pool sit even lower? And that's part of the reason that you can see in the, see to the pool?
The pool sits at about the same level.
And so your fence is gonna be at the same level as your house?
When it's extended 32 feet in front of the house, you will be limited view to the backyard.
So, so the fence is gonna be going uphill, is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, yes, it will be. You know, I, I mean, like I said before, my neighbor is actually on the phone with you guys right now, I guess. I know it's not up for hearing of.
Well, again, so you, you have concerns with the law and we're asking you questions about the law, not what your neighbor wants, not to dismiss what your neighbor may want, but if you're gonna have a fence.
From the neighbor as well.
But it, it's not just your neighbor, it's the whole neighborhood, it's the whole town.
So is, is your house the one with the flagpole in the front or the one to the, to the right of it?
I gotta think about that. I'm not sure if they have a flagpole or not.
You don't have the flagpole, correct?
No, I do not have the flagpole.
Okay, so you're to the right of the flagpole and you have those big spruce? Okay, so you're to the right of the flagpole and you have those big spruce trees?
Yep.
Okay, those aren't your property?
Correct.
You have a post and rail fence in the front of your house now?
It's been there since I moved in.
That's what I'm asking. You have a post and rail that's like falling apart a little bit.
Yeah.
So we're, we're looking at the same house?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not getting it.
So I, I don't even see your neighbor's fence. Um, it looks to me, and I'm not on the property, so to me, like what Jim said, a fence going left to right with a gate on would block all that view. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what it looks like from the pictures.
Yeah, and I, actually I agree with that assessment as well. It's, it seems like you might want to just consider, uh, you know, um, putting the fence in a different orientation to achieve the same kind of privacy.
You, um, I, I said before, you know, you, you won't see it unless you actually see it in person. You'd have to see the person to understand the landscape of, of how the variances of the height of the road compared to the back of the property line up with the fence line.
Okay, I'm just telling you, we, I'm looking at it right now from, from Google Maps and, and so I can see the front of your house. That's why I can see that you have a post and rail fence that's falling apart and it's, I'm not seeing that I, that I can see your pool from your, into the, into the backyard, so.
It's not just my pool, it's, it's my neighbor's pool. You know, everybody sees into their pool too. I'm sure they, they don't like it as much as I don't enjoy hearing in on them. You know?
Yeah, so we can't see the backyard from, from.
Right.
But again, so the law says you're supposed to do something. You're asking for a variance. And you get the variance if you can't be satisfied in another way. So one of the issues is you want to keep the nice side in, which the law says you can't do. And it seems like you could not come in front of the house by doing something else which may obviate some of those concerns, but all we get is we have to look at the property. So again, this is just a review. We raised this issue with you. So you need to think about exactly what you want. I'm sure some of us will take the time to drive by and take a look at the property, but the, you know, and I understand your neighbor keeps putting things up on the chat thing, but that you have to have a reason. You have to have a reason to get a variance. And even though the neighbor may want it now, as the chair said before, she may not be living there in a couple of years and the next neighbor may not want that.
A whole lot of what else?
People driving down the street may not want to see the unfinished side out. There's a reason the law was written, so.
And so what if the person drives the other way?
You have to look at the law. We give variances for when there's some sort of hardship and you're gonna have to explain that hardship to us.
The other question, the other question. The other question I had is, you know, I understand that, that you need to take the tree down. Trees certainly lose their ability to screen, but uh, will you also be considering putting up replacement trees? And I understand they won't be forty feet or a hundred feet tall to start with, but what's your plan there?
Uh, if I had the fence, I would not put up the trees, but, um, if I were to plant trees, it would be extremely costly, costly to have either a small tree, the amount of them to be put in place, or, um, the cost of having mature trees put in place that were tall enough to accommodate this. And it's, it's the fence, it's the privacy of the fence being there as a blockade, you know, as well.
Right, and, and as I think you've heard from several board members that, you know, perhaps there's a different orientation of the fence that could give you the privacy for your backyard without bringing the fence in front of the front line of your house and having the finished side toward your house.
I mean, there.
I, I think I might see what he's talking about from an aerial view. I can see where their fence stops. Now your neighbor has an above ground pool and so do you, correct?
Co- correct, yes.
Right, and then your neighbors is directly off their back porch. Your pool is more towards the rear of the yard.
Co- correct.
Right, okay. So I see where their fence stops. Basically you can see them in their pool.
Co- correct, and, and, and on top of this, in, in the, hopefully in the near future, in the next year or two, I'd be able to financially be able to put a new pool in at the rear of my house, which would then be an impedance with no fence being in place there too. Obviously that's all due to the financials in the near future, but that is my ultimate plan, but even as it sits, you know, like you had just said, there is a privacy issue there.
Yeah, I, I can see it, um, looking at the aerial view. I can see what you're talking about. I don't see where anybody can see your pool, but you were sitting on.
That's the thing, I mean, nobody likes to be peeped on when they're in a pool.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay.
Okay, I have a question.
Go ahead, Aziz.
Yeah, when was the roof replaced?
I believe two thousand twelve it was replaced, if I remember from the.
Okay, other, the reason is the Google, whatever view is showing us people on the roof, so that I wanted to see, you know, how old was this particular picture, uh, but you're, you know, the, the spruce uh, between, uh, I mean, the, the trees between your house and your neighbor's house that has a flagpole, uh, I mean, those are pretty mature trees. Quite few of them, so are you gonna remove all of those trees?
Yes, I believe there's four or five of those spruces and it's all dead, up to five, ten feet in the air. I mean, ten, fifteen years ago, it was probably plenty good. But unfortunately, it's lost it.
Okay, yeah, because your, your neighbor's driveway is right next up there, so basically, um, you plan to have all of those trees removed and then you're gonna replace it with a six foot fence coming all the way to your, uh, now the front fence that you have in the front, the, the two, whatever you, you call it, I mean, it just, uh, basically, uh, it, I mean, are you gonna remove that fence also or are you gonna leave it be?
I'm gonna leave that for the temporary time until I can financially be able to replace the fence. I don't even know if I want a fence there, that, that, you know, post and rail fence or not.
It's not on your property.
What's that?
Doesn't appear to be on your property.
That's right, it's not.
Is it on a town's property then?
Yeah, it's in the right of way.
Oh.
So it should really, it should come down anyway.
Okay, I don't have an issue with that. Like I said, it's, it's kind of falling apart.
Hey, I'm not there, so I can't tell, but I, I, I understand what you're saying. A lot of times those spruces, as they get to fifty feet high, the bottoms die off. I, I, I'm thinking from a landscape point of view, it almost makes sense if you wanted a fence to still keep the trees because they block view and they block wind.
They block wind and they destroy my grass. I've got a golf, I've got a golf green out back right now, so.
I do need to ask a question about your garage. Your garage, do you have a variance for that garage?
Yes.
Okay.
It was approved before I purchased the house.
Okay, just making sure.
Yep. Well, that was one of the struggles we had, that and the, and the shed out in back there, so.
What's the, what's the pleasure of the board? I'm, I'm telling you, I don't see it, but you know, I think there are other options here.
That's obviously my point of view.
Uh, motion to advertise?
That's fine, that we can advertise and listen to the neighbors, so I have a motion to advertise from Aziz. Is there a second?
My second.
Second from Rocco. Jim, how do you? Ra- Aziz?
Hi.
Mary?
Hi.
And Rocco? All right, so Mr. Hannah, again, you're gonna have to call the office tomorrow or sometime this week to get the,
Okay.
Your email address to get the instructions mailed to you so we can get you a sign.
Gotcha.
Next month we'll have a public hearing and then we can hear from your neighbors.
Okay.
All right.
No problem. I, I invite you guys to stop by and take a look so you can understand.
Yep, we will try to do that.
Thank you so much.
All right, have a good evening.
You too.
Night.
All right, item number seventeen, appeal three nine five three Leonard, Jonathan Leonard, three Pers Lane, Hopeville Junction, requesting a thirty-one foot frontline variance on New York State Route three seventy-six and a forty-eight foot frontline variance on Pers Lane for a pre-existing house built in nineteen sixty, a forty-eight foot frontline variance on Pers Lane for a proposed nine foot by nine foot deck and a twenty-three foot frontline variance for a proposed twelve foot by twenty-four foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one twenty-one and one ninety-four dash one oh seven B of the zoning ordinance. Just guys, be careful whoever's not muted because there's a lot of feedback coming through. So Mr. Leonard, I need you to star nine or to raise your hand so we can recognize you.
It appears, um, recognized. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. All right, so go ahead and tell us what you're proposing to do here.
Okay, first in the interest of disclosure, uh, with having to work, forced to be working from home, when I bought this house, I had no plans on, uh, spending so much time here during the week, but things have changed and I had a lack of space. My wife works from home anyway. I was working in the basement and the gas smell from the motorcycles was giving me headaches. The shed is in place. I had them put the shed in and I put stuff in there and I moved into the basement. I did it. I have to work and I just didn't have space in the house to do it. It's what it is. So the shed is a twelve by twenty-four shed exactly where it says it's gonna be. Uh, I want to get a, I'll deal with that as it, as it comes. Uh, it's the most, the property's on a pretty steep hill and it made the most sense. Pers Lane is a dead end and it made the most sense to put the shed there. And then, uh, there's been a deck on that house for years and years. If you go to Google Map, you'll see the old deck. The guy who flipped this house, I guess, would be the appropriate word, uh, replaced the decking on the old deck and, uh, he didn't get a permit for it. And so the deck had to be removed before we could buy the house and replace with stairs. Sorry. And, uh, that's what we want. We just want a nine by nine deck with stairs facing away from the road.
Okay, how old is this survey that you're giving, you've given us? Because you've got structures that are being shown as not existing?
Um, I'm not, I gave you a copy of the full survey. I provided it to the town. You have it.
What's on the screen is the survey?
No, I provided a survey to the office. I went and made a copy and provided a survey. The whole survey, I guess the town lawyer wanted to have a look at it.
Oh, okay.
I can go grab the copy of it if you like and tell you.
It's okay, there's, there's more pieces coming that they, they're showing us here, so.
I didn't scan the full survey in because it, uh, wasn't pertinent to.
Okay, so, so on Google Maps, your, your, your deck is, is there. I don't know whether it's in the old deck or the really.
The old deck.
Um, and you know, you have a very, you have a property that is, you're going up the hill on Pers Lane, you're gonna be off to the left, so the, the higher end of your property, further away from Route three seventy-six is, I agree with you, that's the more appropriate place to put a shed. You don't want it, any drivers distracted by looking at structures closer to three seventy-six, so. I'm, I'm okay with this. Um, any board members, Aziz, uh, sorry, let's start with Jim. Any questions for the applicant?
I don't think so, but other than, is the survey you have, one that you wrote, not existing on the two sheds and?
I wrote, I wrote the non-existing on there.
So we probably have that, that's what we're looking at, so.
Yeah, that's, that's off, that's a, it's a pretty current survey, it was.
Two decks has a, a yellow, green tint to it for some reason?
Uh, I actually colored it so the lines would just pop so you could see the, I provided it, I had a professional copy made, you know, it's a large frame survey.
So, okay.
Provided it to the city.
We're all looking at that, so, yeah, I don't think I have any other questions. You got a typical small piece there that you, on that location.
Okay, Aziz, any questions?
Yeah, I would like to get a copy of the survey because if I look at the survey, if you look at the bottom right of the survey, the first lane seems to be going through the property.
It is.
It is.
It is. That's why the town attorney needed the, the survey.
Okay, um.
I don't mind paying taxes on the, on that piece of the road.
The survey that's up on the screen, Aziz, you have that survey, so.
Yeah, I do have it. I'm looking at it and I'm also looking on Google Maps and I'm looking at the property, um, and so, um, uh, uh, um, I was wondering if he has all the other variances that he needs, um, um.
The lawyer, the lawyer seemed to think so. I can give you his name. He just bought the house, so you had to go through the, so that's, I'm represented in that matter.
There are a whole slew of, of variances that we are addressing with this request, so.
Okay, yeah, yeah, now, yeah, now I saw it. Okay, anyway, yeah, I don't have any other issues. This is good, I'm fine.
Okay, Mary, any questions for the applicant?
I have no questions.
Okay, Rocco, any questions for the applicant?
I have no questions.
Okay, do I have a motion for public, to approve for public hearing for June?
So moved.
A move, so it's moved by Aziz, seconded by Rocco? Yeah, thank you. All right, so votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So, um, Mr. Leonard, so we'll see you next month for the, your public hearing, but you do need to, um, call the office and give them your email address so that they can email you that your instructions for your sign and stuff.
Do you mind if I just put the email address in the chat right now?
Um, it's a public chat that's gonna be recorded and preserved, so you may not want to do that.
I don't care. I'm gonna give my work email address.
Um.
No, I'll, 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 I'll email Jackie in the, in the morning.
Okay, great. And then you will need two signs though. You're gonna need one sign on three seventy-six and one on Pers Lane. You had, do have two fronts there, so.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Put it in the middle of Pers Lane.
I'm sure everybody will see it when they're speeding down three seventy-six.
All right, we'll see you next month. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. All right, item number eighteen, appeal three nine five four Stewart Shops, number three sixty-four Route three seventy-six. Stewart Shops, number three four eight sixty Route three seventy-six, Wappingers Falls, is requesting a twenty-seven foot frontline variance for a proposed eight hundred square foot canopy pursuant to the schedule of bulk regulations. So whoever is here for Stewart Shops, if you can star nine if you're on the phone or raise your hand, you're online.
I believe I'm outside if you can hear me.
Look at that. You show up with your logo on there.
Well, we try. No camera, I apologize for that, but.
That's all right. Can you please introduce yourself so we know who we're talking to?
Yes, my name is Marcus Andrews. I'm with Stewart Shop. Um, here before the board tonight to introduce the project. Uh, we're looking to do a, um, new canopy at our existing Stewart Shop located, uh, three seven, on three seventy-six, um, in the town of East Fishkill. Uh, the existing site has two canopies, um, they kinda, the interior islands of the two canopies kind of pigeon toe together. Um, this came about, we started this, uh, proposal with the replacement, we're looking to replace the existing gas tanks which I believe have reached the age of replacement. They are, I believe, steel tanks. Uh, we'd be replacing those with, uh, double wall fiberglass tanks. At that time, we'd be looking to install a new canopy. Uh, we removed the two existing canopies, replaced it with one, um, canopy that has three fueling islands uh, for six fueling points. Uh, for the board this evening, seeking a front setback variance for the proposed canopy. Um, there was a taking done by DOT. I'm not exactly sure the exact date of that taking, um, but it brought the property line.
but it brought the property line in off of three seventy-six by eight feet. The existing canopy sits today at sixteen and a half feet off that new property line and our proposed canopy would be at thirteen point seven feet. So we're looking at a variance for that from, from property line. At that time, we'd also, the existing freetanding sign was, is pretty much off the property now that DOT took the taking, so we'll be, we're looking to replace that on the opposite side of the property. And we're proposing what we show is pretty much our standard Stewart sign with our sixteen-inch LED lighting and a sixty-three square foot sign. So we'd be looking to get a variance from the ZBA for the size of that sign as well. And that is a quick summary of the project in regards to what pertains to the ZBA.
Okay, I don't think, we, we don't handle signs anymore, so I don't think we handle that. I think the planner just does, handles the signs, so. This is my Stewart Shops, by the way, so I know this one very, very well. So you're actually, you want, where right now you can, you know, assuming people are at the pump, it's, it's, there's very little room for somebody to go around the front of the pumps. So you're actually going to eliminate that ability for somebody to go that way.
Uh, it'll, the, the islands themselves, the dispensers themselves will pretty much be at the same location as far as depth into the lot.
Oh, okay, all right.
The canopy itself becomes larger, I believe their fourteen-foot canopy, fourteen-foot wide now for the canopy, and our proposed canopy is twenty feet wide, just gives you a little more protection underneath the canopy.
Now I get it, so you're not actually changing the fueling station locations themselves because I, I would not, you know, people can just literally pull right in and go right to the pump that they need and you're not having to worry about angling in and going around. You're just talking about the overhead, it's not actually going to impact down below, it's, it's giving more protection, actually.
It's giving more protection, but the islands themselves will be changed as well. There's four, there's four islands today.
Right.
We're proposing three.
Got it.
You can see on, on, you know, the map, I'm assuming everyone has, there's dotted lines in the background. Those are the existing location.
Now, if you just told me you were adding a diesel pump, I'd be a really happy camper, but I won't go there.
What we plan on doing is adding a three plus one diesel pump, it's a low-flow diesel. We, we, we actually are adding, one of the dispensers will be a low-flow diesel.
Wow, now you're really making my day. All right. All right, questions or comments, Jim, any questions for the applicant?
Oh, thank you.
Aziz, any questions for the applicant?
No, I'm good.
Okay, Mary, any questions for the applicant?
No questions, no.
All right, and Rocco, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
All right, so I need a motion to allow this to go to public hearing for June.
So moved.
Moved by Aziz, seconded by Rocco, I think, because I thought that was your voice. Okay. So, votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
All right, we are good for public hearing, again, Mr. Andrews, if you can call the office to get the information for your sign. All right.
I'll be in touch with Jackie.
Good, thank you, then we'll see you next month.
Great, thank you, everyone.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks.
Item number nineteen, Appeal three nine five five Brundage, Anthony Brundage, eighth Inky Lane, Hopewell Junction, requesting a four-foot variant, front line variance for an existing eight foot by thirty-foot front stoop and a two-foot height variance for an existing six-foot fence which is located on the property line pursuant to sections one ninety-four point ninety-four and one ninety-four point ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. So, Mr. Brundage, star nine if you're on the phone or raise your hand so that we can acknowledge you, please.
Michael? I enabled him to speak.
Okay, so this is the first time we're seeing your application, Mr. Brundage, if you don't mind taking us through what you're doing here. Mr. Brundage? I think we're having some problems with the, with the audio again.
Mr. Brundage?
Okay, the phone number and, and the conference code are in the chat box already, so.
Says he's here.
Yeah, we see, we see that, but we can't hear you, so. Can we, can we ask you to please call in?
I'll, I'll re-paste it in there.
Well, it's right there, and he should be able to see it, and, oh, there it is, that's you, okay. All right. Mr. Brundage, if you could just let us know if you're joining us by phone, I'd appreciate that. Mary, I go, somebody needs to mute themselves, I'm hearing a printer going. All right, um, Michael, any new phone numbers on or no?
Not so far, we can try him and Mr. Twoza at the end, because Mr. Twoza, I know, wants to try again, based on what... Saying he's calling in now, so if we, we can wait another, I guess, twenty seconds or so and see if it works.
Okay. We just have two more applications after this, but then, Mr. Twoza will go back to...
Well, it's a new phone number, so I'll, I'll try this one out.
Okay.
Mr. Brundage, is that you?
Hello? Yes, this is me.
Okay, good, thank you. So, so this is... That's okay, it happens, so this is the first time we're seeing your application, if you don't mind taking us through what you're proposing here?
Sure, I purchased this home about ten years ago as a short sale. We have listed the house for sale and it's been sold, contracts were signed since early March. And then, we're coming to the realization that some of these things were done without permits by previous owners. So, there's the front stoop, which is, it's eight foot by twelve foot. I know it says eight by thirty on the thing, but it's, it's eight by twelve foot. That requires a variance because it's not fifty feet from the front property line.
Okay.
And then also, there's a fence to the side of the house that provides privacy for the side deck. That's just not, it's, it's a six-foot fence and it's not two feet from the property line.
Okay, the one issue that I'm seeing is you have fence that looks like it's going beyond your property in the rear.
Yes, that is just like a, like chicken wire, that's coming down.
Okay, because we can't, we can't have you having something extending onto another property owner, so.
Correct, yeah, I was unaware that it was actually over my line. We recently had a survey done and then we noticed it, so that was definitely coming down. There's actually a stockade, a four-foot stockade fence coming out the back of the house.
Okay.
I noticed that's over the line a little bit as well, and that has been cut down to fit our property lines also.
Okay, all right, that's good. So again, you did not put up the fence, you did not put up the stoop?
No, they're all, well, the fence, the fence I did put up, the stoop was pre-existing.
You put up the six-foot fence on the property line?
Correct.
How long ago?
Uh, I'd say roughly five, six years ago.
Okay, um, and so why is it on the property line instead of the two feet in?
It was just similar, I was unaware of where the property line, it took, it took a lot of help from a, from a neighbor who previously owned all the property around this house to find the stakes, and then when we found them, we had the survey done and it just, that's where it was.
Does the neighbor object to the fence where it is?
No, I actually included letters from most of my neighbors, minus one.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't know if you guys have it. And they have, nobody had any objections.
I don't see them, any letters with my application, but that's fine, we'll make sure we have them for the next meeting, so. All right, I mean, you've got a lot of, you've got a lot of vegetation off to the left there, that's where the fence is, right?
Yeah, it's just a wooded lot, there's nothing, there's a whole lot there between my house and the next house that's on eighty-two.
Okay, right.
It's just all wooded.
All right, questions from Jim, anything for the applicant?
No, thank you.
Aziz, any questions for the applicant?
Um, I was just wondering, um, when was the house built?
The house was built in the forties, forties or early fifties.
Um, so all the other variances that the property needs have been addressed, is that correct?
Yes, there was an extension put on the back at some point that was addressed, and I believe the, the side deck also has a variance. The only thing that didn't have a variance but has been, since been removed is the carport. That's, that's gone.
Okay, thank you.
Aziz, as part of our packet, we actually have a copy of the zoning Board of Appeals action from February nineteen eighty-six. So...
Yeah, and nineteen ninety also.
Yep, you're right, thank you, so yeah, so they're, they're in here, so that's good. Okay, so, Mary, any questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Rocco, any questions for the applicant?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion for a public hearing for June?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Jim?
Aye.
Vote for the public hearing, thank you, Aziz?
Aye.
Um, Mary?
Aye.
And Rocco?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so, Mr. Brundage, you're all, you're set for, have a, your public hearing next month, please call the office, call to Jackie to get your signage information and then we'll see you next month.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, item number twenty, Appeal three nine five six Wyland, Daniel Wyland, seven forty Route eighty-two Hopewell Junction is requesting a two-foot height variance for the replacement of existing six-foot fence which is located in the front yard pursuant to section one ninety-four dash ninety-eight of the zoning ordinance. Mr. Wyland, star nine if you're on the phone or raise your hand, please, if you're on the computer.
I'm here, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. All right, so like, good evening, like the last applicant, this is the, the first time we're, you know, having an opportunity to review your application, so if you don't mind taking us through.
Sure, no, no problem at all. So, what you'll see on the, the survey there, kind of mapped out, there, there's a pre-existing six-foot privacy fence on the yard right now, it's kind of gotten a little worse for the wear, so I wanted to update it and replace it with a vinyl fencing that's white, basically matching our house aesthetically, a lot more pleasing than kind of the, the older one that's there. Because we have, which, which I did not know when I applied for this, I didn't know I was going to need a variance. Fence was there, I assumed, you know, all that was there and, you know, realized that there was no variance for the fence. So, in order to maintain the privacy from Arrowhead right there, as you can see, I just want to swap out basically what we have for the, you know, a newer fence, so.
Okay, so wait, let me, let me understand this, you have a post and rail fence that looks like it's not even on your property?
Uh, no, well, that, that post and rail fence, that does not exist anymore, that, that's a, that's a, um, it's, it's set back from the road a couple feet, there's a four-foot fence, so that's acceptable going along the front line, so let me, let me take you through, it'll help a little bit. So, if you could see where kind of the thick line that I put, where I noted the measurements, that is a sick, that portion is the six-foot wood fencing. Then where it says post and rail fence, um, there's kind of, I, I guess it's a vinyl post and rail at this point, but it's set back from the road and it's four feet, so I'm not looking...
It, it might be set back from the road, but it's not on your property.
Well, that, that is, that is the road there, so I don't...
Doesn't matter, you, there's a right-of-way there, there's a difference between your property line and the, at the edge of pavement, so that fence has to get moved in off the town's property.
I mean, that's fine, that, that wasn't what I was even broaching tonight, but, you know, I certainly, again, I, you know, I, I don't know when, I, I didn't take the measurements on that side, so whatever is there from this survey, this is nineteen eighty-seven. So, I would have to measure that out to even see, like, how far back from, on the post and rail side, how far back from the road would that need to be?
It needs to be on your, on your property.
Yeah.
If you look at your surveys, sir, it's across your property line. It has to be on your side of that property line. With a four-foot fence, it can be on the property line if you can find those pins there and, and draw a string between them. But you have to be on your property line and although you may not be requesting a variance, we can't give you a variance for that. And we can't give you a variance for what you're requesting if there's other issues on your property. So you need to address that.
Okay. Yeah, I, I don't... So I'll have to look into that, I mean, any best way to approach that?
Again, if you can find the pins, it's showing marks on that, it doesn't say a pin was found, but where the directions changed, a little circle on the survey, you can look to see if there's pins. If there's no pins, then you're going to either have a surveyor tell you where you can put it or take it down, I mean, I don't know what to tell you, but you got to make sure it's not on town property.
Okay. All right, so then do I have to resubmit my request? How would I, you know, now I'm at a standstill because that wasn't even where I was addressing and like I said, I don't, I don't even know, truthfully, if that, that, this map could be old because none of the stuff on that even exists as it was, so they may have pulled that back and I'm just having a discussion over something that could be behind the line.
Okay, but then you have to give us a more current survey, if you're, if you're trying to tell us you think that post and rail fence might have been replaced and is where it belongs, that's fine, but you have to show us a survey that shows the fences on your property and, and not beyond your property lines.
Okay.
You know, it, it may be in your best interest to just get a more current survey done, okay? Good for you to know where your property lines are, okay?
Okay.
The, so, so you do want the six-foot fence or you don't, which?
Yes, I, I want the six-foot fence where, where it's marked out, I want to replace that portion. I mean, obviously, I, I have no problem removing the other one, but that, that portion doesn't even require a permit because it's four feet. So, even for me to move that, I can agree and, and have that pulled back. That, that portion doesn't require the variance, I only need it for the, the marked outside where you can see it's twenty-four feet back from the property and then thirty-eight feet on the, on the side. That section is where I need the variance.
And you're saying, you're saying twenty-four feet, are you going from the road? Because if you're going from the road, again, that's not twenty-four feet.
I, I went roughly from the road.
No, that's...
And you're probably only, then you're, then you probably need even a little more because you might only be, if you're twenty-four, if you need a twenty-four foot variance, that means you're twenty-six feet away from the road, but you need to be fifty feet away from your property line. So, you probably need another ten feet then, you probably need a thirty-four foot variant, we need a survey.
Okay. And what would I do then, do I have to reapply or would I just...
No, 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 we're, we're just, well, if you can get the survey by next month, we'll just get updated information from you. But, so why are you looking to keep the fence if the pool has been removed?
Oh, for privacy, just the backyard, for any, you know, any kids, pets. Like, right now, we're planning to get a dog, so I want to keep that, I want to keep that fence in as it is.
Okay, all right.
And again, that...
I'm not, I'm not worried about it, it's just, because it's been there, but it's just, um, if you're, I can understand it was probably hiding, you know, giving privacy to a pool before, so.
Eventually, again, this is, this is not at this moment, eventually the thought would be, we'd like to put in maybe like a, a small above ground in the back.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's more of a long-term or, or future beyond this.
Okay, do any of the, do any of your neighbors, it doesn't appear, do any of your neighbors actually front onto, yeah, you actually, your neighbors do front on, onto Arrowhead. You, it looks like your driveway is on Route eighty-two.
Yep, that's correct, we're reversed.
But your neighbors are all on Arrowhead, so wow, so you, you have two front yards, because you've got streets on both sides, your front and your rear, but for your neighbors, those are, your front yard is their rear yard, and your rear yard is their front yard, wow.
Yep. You can see some of my dilemma in that, so...
Yeah, holy cow, I mean, because your houses are all kind of like lined up with each other, but for some reason, your driveways go in the other direction.
Yeah, and, I mean, Arrowhead crosses right, you know, right behind there, so once you're out in the backyard, it's, you know, as you're driving by, it's pretty visible, if there's no fence there, it'd be very visible.
Right.
They didn't give you much, they didn't give you much of a backyard either.
Correct.
Right, but the good thing is, they moved it back from Route 82 to give you a little bit quieter, you know. Alright, um, how long is that stretch of the six-foot fencing along Arrowhead?
Um, it is approximately 66 feet.
Wow, is there any screening on the front of it, or are you proposing to put any screening on to break it up?
No, I'm just, I was just gonna do white vinyl fencing.
Yeah, can we ask you to put in a couple bushes here and there, just to break it up? Because 66 feet of white vinyl fencing is very noticeable.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I can, I can put a few bushes or things in front of it.
Just to, you know, again, just to break it up a little bit, it's, white fencing is, you know, can really kind of jump out at you a little bit.
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly...
I'm not asking on all sides, I'm just asking for the side that fronts onto Arrowhead.
On the Arrowhead, yeah, I mean, that's not a problem, we can break it up with a few things.
For your survey, sir, if you have a full copy and you can see who the surveyor is, and they're still in business, that's the one you should contact. They may even work with you if they have it on the computer or something.
Okay.
Peter Houston did it. It looks like this survey's from 1937.
Really?
Or is that 87? It's hard to see it.
Yeah, it's 87.
87, okay, that's a lot better, thank you.
Yeah, the original survey, he passed away in March. I believe the business is still there, they joined with another company, but I agree with Jim, same thing I did. If you try to get the original survey, the price will be a lot less, because they'll have all the information already.
Okay, so I don't think this is ready for a public hearing yet, I think we need to make sure we're getting all the information and all the measurements correct, because a 10-foot difference on a variance, he would just have to come back in again, so. So, Mr. Wyland, if you can, get in touch with your surveyor and let us know as soon as, you know, if you're gonna have the survey in place before our June meeting, that would be great, and then we'll hear you again. If not, then just call the office before the June meeting and let us know to put you on for July, and then we'll deal with it then.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright, thank you very much.
Alright, have a good evening.
You too.
Alright, need survey. So now we are up to our last, well, item number 21. Appeal number 3958 Santos, Jose, Jesus Santos, 499 Shenandoah Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a variance for an as-built above-ground pool and pool deck located in front of the front line of the house pursuant to Section 194-95C. Property is located in a B1 zone. Mr. Santos, if you, either star nine if you're on the phone, or raise your hand please.
Hello?
Hi, good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, how you doing? Hey, Susan Santos, 499 Shenandoah Road.
Okay, so the first issue we have to deal with is the fact that you are in a business zone where residences are only allowed as caretaker, caretaker, like a second-floor caretaker space. So, this used to be a general store, is my understanding, but it appears it's now your residence? Is there a business operating out of here?
No, just my residence.
Okay, so we have a bigger issue right off the top, in that this is, you have a use of the property. We have to deal with the fact how you're using the property first.
It's my home.
When you purchased the home, did you get a title report?
Um, I was told, I think I got a report, I'm not, I'm not too sure, I don't remember.
Do you have mortgage on the property?
Yes, I do have a...
You probably got a title report, the title report, there was a municipal search done, when did you buy your house, last summer?
It's about a year and about three months, something like that.
Yeah, so, when you, because the building department had a municipal search, which means your title company was doing a search on the property, and the title company was told that the residential use of the property was not allowed, it was in violation. So, your attorney should have advised you that the residential use of this property was not allowed.
Why was, as a residential, not allowed? Because they told me, the people that were living here before, changed it from commercial place to a residential place.
They have changed it, but they didn't do it legally.
What do you mean they didn't do it legally? They said they even changed the taxes from commercial taxes to residential taxes.
That's not my understanding.
That is my understanding.
So, the first thing we have to deal with is whether this makes sense. I mean, the property doesn't have a whole lot of parking, so I'm not disagreeing that it should be a residential use. But we have to deal with the fact that it is legally not allowed to be a residential use. So, it appears to me, and Michael, you may have to weigh in on this, that it appears whether we should be considering a use variance in this case, because of business use in this area at this point in time, may no longer, it may not make sense.
That's what it sounds like to me, too.
Norman, on Google Maps, all the neighbors are houses. This is the only parcel, this is the only parcel that is somehow...
No, there's a church right next door, there's a Baptist church right next door, Aziz, with a graveyard and everything. That's why I gave you that Google, I gave you that Google map image that shows you the church.
Oh, yes.
That's the only, that's the only commercial place in this area, everybody else is residential.
So, that's why I'm not disputing that it may, residential use of this property probably makes sense. But right now, what we're telling you, it is legally not allowed.
Yeah, at one point, that was an Old Deli or something, they're a very unusual location, yeah.
Yeah, general store, yeah. So, frankly, we can't deal with putting a pool, and putting a pool, much less in a front yard. Um, you know, if you want to tell us why that location makes sense, that's fine, and we can, you know, perhaps pursue this all at the same time, but, you know, you just heard from a couple of the previous applicants, if you've been on the line long enough, that, you know, they're concerned even pools in their backyard with people being able to see them, so I'd be curious why you'd want a pool in your front yard.
Because I was told if I put the pool behind the house, if something were to go wrong, it would flood the house out. And that's why they said it's made more sense to put it on the side, where the water can just go straight into the drains and stuff like that.
Okay, well, you are allowed a pool on the side yard, you're just not in the front yard.
Well, the thing is that, this is the side. Now, if you look at the survey, though it looks like it's the front, right on the side of the house, the actual front of the house is closer to the driveway. So, on the side, it resides backwards a little bit, so it's way further back than what it actually is on, what it looks like.
I mean, part of the problem is, I drive by this location all the time, and the construction and the pool went up before any application was made. The pool is to the front, you're putting up a deck and stuff behind it, towards the back of the house. And so, you need to look at that, and...
The deck is, the deck's not in the back of the house, the deck is right on the side of the pool, and also...
Around the back, yeah. You got a lot of wood going on behind it, so the pool may have been able to move back. But please let me finish, sir, and then if you want to disagree, you can.
Sure, I'm sorry.
The other problem is, is it would be difficult, I don't know whether it would fit behind the house, but this house is cut into the side of a hill. So, he did go in and do a lot of excavation and try to clean up in the back and move the back area, make a little bit of a flat area behind the house last year. But, you know, you probably have to take some pictures, or people go by and look at it, but, yeah, the pool is, the house sits off, I don't know. I don't have the survey in front of me, you know, going by it was probably five or six feet off the road, and the pool is probably a little bit further than that, but boy, is it close to the road.
Yes, but I plan to put a fence also to cover it.
I don't know whether it would have made more sense for you to figure out a oval pool, or instead of a big round one or something, but you've made some choices, and now you're gonna have to try to justify them to the board.
Mr. Santos, what side, what height of a fence are you gonna ask to put there?
A four-foot.
But isn't the pool itself only four feet?
Yeah, but it's, it's like on a hill, you know, and the fence goes up.
Well, I don't think a four, I know the house very well, I drive, I don't live far from there.
Right.
Four's not gonna, not gonna cover that, especially when you're coming...
Feet, I mean, my thing is, I was trying to go by the rules, they said you only allowed a four-foot fence.
Sure.
So, I was trying to do the right thing and say four.
But wait, you want to go by the rules, but you put up a pool without a permit?
Oh, I called, I called the office, I left two messages, nobody called me back, I went to the office, it was closed.
Yeah.
And then, I did it with a licensed contractor, with a licensed electrician, I did it with a licensed pool installer, so I...
And they did it without a permit? Wow.
You guys didn't return the call for me, and you guys, when I went there, it was closed. And if you check the records and you check the notes that I sent you, I have the date and time that I left the message, and no one ever got back to me.
Okay, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean you're still...
When nobody got back to me, I figured, let me go to the town hall, then I found it closed, so...
Did you hear, sir, did you hear about a pandemic and the government being shut down? Did you hear that?
Yes, of course.
So then, that's, none of that's an excuse. When the government gets shut down, and you're told you can't go into the work, and I work for the government, and I'm not allowed to go into the office, my client shows up at the office, they're not gonna find me there. That's the way of the world right now.
Well, I called too, somebody can return my call.
Okay, but there's a voicemail message on the phone line that explains that the offices are closed to the public right now, and...
And said, leave a message.
Okay, so we still have to deal with the use of this property, because it's a B1 use and residence is not allowed?
So, I don't get it, if somebody else was living here, and they were residential, and I bought it from them, and then they, the taxes are residential, not commercial, they switched it over. So, and it went lower, the taxes went lower from commercial to residential when they did it. So, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what they're talking about.
How do you know the taxes went lower? Did you request the change?
No, they requested it, and they told me that it went down, and they, if I remember, they had shown me receipts or something that it was going down, because they had requested it, and the taxes went lower from...
Because they just assessed value where the property went down, I don't know, I would agree, I would agree with the chair, Mr. Cunningham, that it doesn't make sense, it's commercial, when that was a general store, people had to park on the road. It's a very dangerous situation for people to park on the road there, so I think it's a good case for the use to be changed. So, I don't have an issue with that, it's not a good location by any stretch of imagination to have a commercial use of that building.
But we have to, Michael, what does he have to give to us to document for us to approve a use variance?
So, I think what'll be best at this point is, I'll have to put something together for Mr. Santos to provide to the board before next meeting. I'll put together a package for information for him to provide.
Okay.
At least be prepared to present it at the next meeting.
The parking is so limited there, I don't know how the owners have basically parked there. There's a little cut-in on one side of the building where they park in. I quite frankly, wouldn't want to pull out back onto the road from where they parked, but it's not a good location, really is not.
Well, it's a tough intersection, I mean, the house across the street is the same problem, they were cut out to pull into.
Yeah, well, they're better off than this one, but this sits right on the road, it's one of those buildings that was put up, and the road was probably a dirt road, and you went along that, and you stopped there, and eventually, the area developed a little bit more, yeah.
You know, I drive very slowly when I go by there, because the kids for the church are always coming back.
They come up over that hill, some people go over that at 35 miles an hour, they do it.
Yeah.
Do we have a current survey for this one?
Yeah, I had a survey done by Robert Oswald.
Jackie, do you have the current survey?
I do, it just came in May, after the package went out, May 13th.
Okay, do you have it on for the screen?
No, it's not on the screen.
No. Because I'm not understanding where this pool is even going, so, that's where it is, sorry, where it is.
It kind of looks like it's in the side yard, because if you're, if you're driving up to it, it is the side, it is...
Okay, but is it, does it protrude in front of the front line of the house, or it doesn't go along the side there, the front line?
I can tell you, the pool goes in front of the house by, I believe, a foot and a half. But, the front of the house is closer to the driveway, and the pool sits further behind the driveway, because the way is turned, so if you had the survey, you can see what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't have it unfortunately.
I don't know if Jackie has it, can look at it to confirm it, but literally, the front steps of this house is 78 feet from the road.
Exactly.
Yeah, yes.
Right, exactly, and then...
Is there a right-of-way there?
And the pool is...
I don't know.
Further in, way further in from the road.
Right.
Because the ways, the way it turns, so it's like, even though on the survey, you'll see the pool a foot further in from, in front of the house, the house is actually like steps from the, from the road, and the pool sits further behind.
Okay, well, I'm gonna cut you off at this point, because honestly, there's nothing we can do until we get, work out whether residential use of this property is allowed. So, so as you heard from our attorney, Michael Cunningham, he's gonna prepare the documentation that we're gonna need from you for us to consider a use variance to allow residential on this property.
Okay, also, reading the bylaws, I saw that you guys do give a variance to an irregular corner, which I happen to be in. So, I think that's...
Very, we give a variance for what?
For being in an irregular corner. I was reading from your website, that's what you guys do, and I was hoping that you would...
We have to deal, we have to deal with the issue of the use of the property first.
Okay, sure, no problem, thank you.
Alright, so we'll get in touch with you, you know, for next, before next month.
Norman, that's the survey.
Yeah, that's the survey.
It says 15 feet. I tell you, driving by it, it looks a lot closer than that. But the problem is, it doesn't have lines on there showing the gradient, but it goes up very, very, very sharp from the road up.
Yeah, I can't see it though, for some reason, I've got a Zoom screen in front of me, not, I'm not seeing the survey.
Okay.
And I don't want to close that out, because it looks like it's gonna take me out of the Zoom meeting.
Property lines in the middle of the road.
Oh, okay.
And to prove my point, what I said was, most of the deck is behind the pool, you can see it on the survey, most of the deck is behind the pool.
Oh, I see what you mean. But if you see, the house is like, like... But have you seen, the house is like, like a few feet from the, from the, from the road, and the, and the pool sits back.
So you've also got a deck around this too?
Yes.
And pool equipment in the front of the house?
Yeah, again, Norman, yeah, the pool pump is in the front of the, uh, house basically, but I think he needs to address the issue of zoning first. Use, and then we may, uh, look into putting the pool pump back because it's brand-new construction or still in progress, so that's something that, I don't know if you want to raise it right now, or.
Yeah, I, I think we've got to deal with the use first, so, okay.
And I would suggest certainly no more work, because I don't know, I think that pool needs to go back, other things can be done.
Sorry.
And the deck certainly has to, should go back too, maybe you just don't get a deck at all on that side.
Yeah, so.
Okay, alright, so Mr. Santos will deal with you, you know, with next month, hopefully if you can get some more information related to a use variance first. Okay?
Okay, um, when would I receive the information or the questionnaire, would I?
Next week.
Alright, well, thank you, thank you for, for your time.
Okay. Um, so, is Mr. Tuzza still on the line?
Hi, Mr. Tuzza, I allowed you to speak.
Hi, you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, it happens, we know. Okay, so you got a new survey of your property?
Yep.
And so tell us what it's telling you.
Uh, about my fence, I'm not going to make my fence, I'm going to remove the other fence, but it's not my property.
Right?
Yeah, and now I'm just need a permit for the shed.
But that shed is really close to your property line on that side too, so. Have you talked to that property owner, does he mind where it is?
No. Alright, that's, this is too close to the road, so my.
Well, it's too close to the road, but you, you're not gonna be able to address that issue because your lot is just not wide enough. Um, the shed's gotta be at least fifteen feet from your property, but this is a B1, right, Michael? Is this a B1 or residential?
I don't think it's necessarily, I don't know for sure what it is, I'll have to, I can try to look at it right now.
Sorry, it's B1.
B1.
So that's what I thought, so is there, is there a property, what's the, what's the side yard for a shed in a B1? It's, so, well, wait, so we're dealing with another residential use in a B1?
Yep.
It's always been residential as far as I know.
Yeah, that, that, that would make sense, and this one, house was built before zoning. So Michael, this one is grandfathered in, right?
That'd be pre-existing non-conforming, right?
Yes, okay, so we don't have an issue to deal with the, like the other one?
It'll be pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay, so is there, is there a side yard variance, or is there a side yard setback for a shed in a B1? There's not a lot of setbacks, you don't have a lot of setbacks in a B1.
That's ten, ten feet is a side yard setback in a B1.
Thank you, so he doesn't even have the ten feet. I haven't driven by here lately, Mr. Tuzza, how far along is this shed, can you move it in a couple feet?
Uh, more to my house?
Yeah. Yeah.
How many feet?
It looks like just two, two feet.
Yeah, can. You can try and move it.
What kind of floor does this shed have?
It has a platform, like a wood platform, but.
You have it on blocks, right?
Yeah.
He can move it in, should be not too hard, he stopped construction, it's been sitting there, partially framed, so, I, from what I can see, driving by it, he should be able to move it with not too much difficulty.
Okay.
If you can move it just two feet closer to your house, at least we'll deal, we'll eliminate the side yard setback, unless your neighbor tells you, you talk to that neighbor and he doesn't object to that being there.
He probably won't.
Yeah, I can do that, move it.
But are you still asking, are you, but now, so now you're not asking for a fence?
No, I'm stuck with that.
Okay, so really all you're asking for is the shed and we're just gonna deal with all the other variances for the house?
Yes.
What's next to you, is that the, uh, cemetery monument place next to you?
I think.
Yeah, but it's far to my house because.
Yeah, I mean, so I don't, I don't think he's gonna have an objection, the only thing he has over there are displays of monuments, so.
Yeah, that's.
On, on. On the agenda, we don't have a side yard variance, we only have a front line and a, um, a front line naturally for the two sides, for Route eighty-two and for Helen Road.
Yeah, so we'll have to amend that.
Yeah, we'll have to add a two-foot side yard. Variance. And we should acknowledge that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use in a B1 district, Jackie and Michelle.
Okay.
Alright. Alright, I, I mean, this gentleman's yard is just tough, you know? I don't think he's got anywhere on his yard where he can, he's not, where he's gonna meet the one-hundred-foot requirement.
Yeah, he's, he's got a finger piece of property, it's only a pinky.
Yeah, literally, like, look at the curve of your finger and that's it, so.
Yeah.
Alright, so are we okay to let this go for public hearing, I mean?
Motion, motion to advertise.
Second, second.
Alright, votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
And Rocco.
Aye.
And we're just making sure we add that sideline request in there.
And take out the fence.
Yeah, yes.
Eliminating the fence, okay?
Yep.
So, your motion carries for your sign, Mr. Tuzza, please call the office sometime this week to get your instructions, you're gonna need two signs, you're gonna need a sign on Route eighty-two and one on Helen Road. The question arises, he's got so much frontage on both of these roads, is one sign enough? One, you know, the two signs, I think it's enough.
Yes.
I, I don't want to distract drivers on Route eighty-two, frankly.
Alright, I gotta make sure, I gotta move my, my shed to my house.
No, we're, we're telling you, don't, don't move the shed, we don't, we think it's far enough away from the, the other business that he probably won't object, if, I mean, at the public hearing, we'll find out if he objects, okay?
Okay.
I think if he gets two signs and he puts them on either side of the house, that'll be fine.
Okay.
The front and the back of the house.
Okay.
But on the street frontage.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, not literally on the sides of the house.
Alright, Mr. Tuzza, are you all, are you all set?
Yes, thank you very much. Be sure.
Yeah, just call the office tomorrow or the next day, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, I think we're taking, I think we've taken care of everybody now, right?
We just did.
Motion, John.
Is there a second from Rocco? Votes as follows, Jim.
Aye.
Aziz.
Man.
Mary, what, Mary?
Aye.
Rocco.
Aye.
And myself, aye, it's eleven oh-two, we are done.
As my battery light starts flashing.